Good afternoon. We will now call the meeting of the Waco City Council May night, I'm sorry, August 18th to order at 3:00 PM. Joining me online today are Mayor Pro Tem Andrea Bearfield, Councilmember Hector Sabido, Councilmember John Kennard, Councilmember Darius Ewing, and Councilmember Jim Holmes. Please join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. On March 16th, 2020, the Governor suspended various provisions of the Open Meetings Act pursuant to his State of Disaster Authority. The change was effective March 16th, 2020 until further notice or until the State of Disaster Declaration expires. In accordance with physical distancing guidelines and while providing as much transparency as possible, this meeting will not be open to the public. This meeting is being broadcast live at WCCC.tv. The audio is also being recorded, and the audio and video recordings will be available to the public. According to the Governor and Attorney General, statutes that may require face-to-face interaction between members of the public and public officials are suspended, provided however that the governmental body offers alternative methods of communication with their public officials. This includes public comment on agenda items. In an effort to allow for as much public input as possible, those who wish to submit their written comments on a listed agenda item were asked to submit their comments to the City Secretary's office by 1:00 PM today. The City Secretary will read into the record the comments submitted for the items on the agenda at the appropriate time. Individuals who registered to speak on a public hearing item will be allowed to speak via conference phone for three minutes on that item. We will now recess the regular session and convene a work session with a report from the City Manager. Bradley?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good afternoon. We do not have any changes to the agenda today, but I do have a number of organizational updates that I wanted to share, that I've been excited to share with the Council and the public. And what it involves is aligning our city's management team to achieve the Council's recently adopted strategic goals. And so I'm going to walk you through four changes to the management team. First and foremost, wanted to announce the promotion of Deidra Emerson, who currently serves as our Assistant City Manager, to the position of Deputy City Manager. Deidra brings 25 years of experience in city government, including almost the last five here in Waco. She's a trusted advisor to me, and I know to y'all as a council, and so I'm excited to announce her promotion. She will be leading several key areas, including the city's work on equitable practices, process improvement, as well as economic development. So please join me in congratulating Deidra with her new promotion.
Bradley, that sounds standing. Congratulations, Deidra. We're really excited for you to be in that role, and thank you for everything that you do for the city.
Thank you.
The second change I wanted to highlight today involves Milet Harrison, who currently leads our economic development efforts here at the city. She'll be assuming the newly created role of Director of Neighborhood Engagement. As the Council's aware, I made the re-energizing of neighborhoods a high priority in the upcoming budget, and I believe the Council believes in that as well. And Milet taking on this role and her knowledge of various city departments will allow us to move ahead very quickly and swiftly and strategically to bring back the energy to our neighborhood program. Milet has served the city of Waco for over 20 years now in a variety of roles, including housing, economic development, and neighborhoods. So please join me in thanking her for taking on that role as well.
Yeah, that's really great, Bradley, and thank you for that move, and really excited about the energy this will bring to our neighborhood associations, which are so important to our city government.
Yes, sir. Third of the four moves, the Council certainly knows, is no stranger to Ashley Neistrom. She serves our office, the City Manager's Office, as Executive Coordinator, and she's done that for the last couple of years very well. She keeps certainly me engaged in various communications that are critical, and she keeps the other city managers going in the right direction as well. Actually, moving her into a new role called Chief of Staff, which is a promotion opportunity for her. She's been with Waco for seven years in several different capacities, and the role of a Chief of Staff to the City Manager will help me really lead critical government relations functions, our work in Austin, DC, as well as serving me as a key communicator to link the City Manager's Office, both to the Council but also to the broader city organization. I'm excited to announce that change for Ashley today. And lastly, I've got the final announcement for Galen Price, who, no stranger to the City Council, currently serves as our Director of Housing and Code Enforcement. Galen's going to temporarily assume the role of Interim Assistant City Manager in a move that allows me to align the city departments strategically in the coming weeks, instead of waiting until the end of 2020 and early '21 when we complete the recruitment process for a third Assistant City Manager. I'm excited, for a couple of reasons, for Galen. One, in that he would be willing to step into that role and take on a new challenge, but also because he's built a team behind him that's capable of stepping up and leading the housing group while he serves in the City Manager's Office. So please allow a few minutes to congratulate Galen as well.
Bradley, those are all great moves. You've identified four really exceptional employees at the city, and I appreciate the roles that you're putting on there.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks for the time to appreciate them and recognize them and the thought process that the executive team put together to really align our team to meet your goals. With that, I'd like to ask Larry to step up and give the Hulsey Report.
All right. Exciting times in Waco. Wow. That's neat. Okay, new face mask banners have been installed throughout downtown Waco, thanks to an idea from City Councilmember Hector Sabido and the Strategic Communications Group. The Downtown Pid has been programming the light pole banners, and City Center Waco staff, who manage the Downtown Public Improvement District, designed the banners that are on both English and Spanish. W Promotions brought the banners to life, and the Public Improvement District partner, Lawns Limited, installed them. Waco Fire Stations became drop-off locations to accept school supplies for area children last week through collaboration with the Waco Foundation. Citizens could drop off wide-rule paper, number-two pencils, crayons, glue sticks, composition notebooks, Kleenex, hand sanitizer, and disposable masks at any of the 13 Waco Fire Stations throughout the city. The collected supplies will be given to students and teachers in the Waco ISD, La Vega ISD, and Conley ISD school districts. In June of 2019, the city of Waco and the Tax Increment Finance Board approved a parking expansion for the Texas Ranger Hall of Fame and Museum. The project will add 22 spaces along the I-35 access road and should be finished by mid to late September. Current attendance is 40% of normal as a result of the I-35 construction and the impact of the COVID virus on the travel. The additional parking will be most welcome when things restart. The three final days of the free COVID-19 tested wrapped up this past weekend at the MCC Highlander Gym. The Wickham and Clinton County Office of Emergency Management, who helped facilitate the eight days of cheek swab testing, along with the McClinton County Public Health District, MCC's Office of Emergency Management, and the Texas Division of Emergency Management provided both the walk-up and drive-through testing during the eight-day event. The website, Three Best Rated, who selects the top three businesses in the city in various categories, chose three city-operated attractions as the best places to visit when coming to Waco. The website scores businesses and attractions on a 50-point scale and has a very strict "no pay-to-play" policy. The website recommended the Cameron Park Zoo, the Waco Mammoth National Monument, and the Texas Ranger Hall of Fame and Museum as the three best-rated attractions to see in Waco. All three of the attractions strongly support the Waco SAFE program by implementing safe practices to limit the spread of COVID-19 and respectfully ask visitors to do the very same thing by following those established practices. And that completes my report.
All right. Thanks, Larry, for that report. We do, Mayor and Council, have one informal report on the agenda today, and that's presented from Galen Price regarding the Waco Housing Authority's Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Project Update for the location of South Terrace Apartments.
Hey Bradley, I'm sorry, this is Hector. I just wanted to, first of all, thank Galen and staff for this report. Very informative. I did want to request a follow-up once the public hearings are set and once we know the schedule of when the work will take place and over which timeframe. If we could get a follow-up report on that, I think it would be a great idea. I know that the Housing Authority will be in communication with the people that live in the complex in South Terrace, but I also think it'd be great if we could reach out to them as council members as well and just make sure that their needs are being met and see if they have any questions. And so if we can, once the public hearings are dated and we know when things are going to start, you know, being worked on, if we can just get a follow-up report, I would greatly appreciate it, sir.
We would be glad to do that, Councilmember.
Thank you.
And I'll add on to that request, just on the ownership organization chart that was in the packet that the Waco Housing Authority provided. I'd just be curious, a lot of the entities that are going to be party to this as part of the overall corporate structure are yet to be, it says either yet to be formed or identified, particularly outside investor. I'd just be curious to know how the final apparatus looks and who all the interested parties are in this transaction, once all those are determined.
Sure. We can, we'll, of course, lean on our partner at Waco Housing Authority to answer both those questions, but we'll provide an update shortly to the Council.
And, sorry, one last quick thing. I love the fact that we, you know, went out and sought this and are using it as a way to, you know, essentially incentivize the implementation of affordable housing and using that tax credit as that. I would just ask and request that, this is something that we use to, as a proactive measure rather than a reactive measure, in that, you know, we use our relationships and our staff that deal with housing to seek these sort of tax credits out proactively and sort of use that to incentivize the development of affordable housing, the same way that, you know, we have systems in place to incentivize businesses to come to Waco. I think there's a lot of good that can be done by using, seeking these tax credits and using them to incentivize developers to, for the implementation of more affordable housing.
Thanks, Councilmember Ewing. That's a great suggestion, and we'll, we may have to stew on that one a little more, but we'll have Galen provide an update to the Council shortly on that. Good suggestion. On our agenda today, we do have nine public hearings for the Council. Galen Price will be presenting an amendment to the Consolidated Annual Action Plan during the business session, and then Clint Peters, our Director of Development Services, will present the other eight public hearings shortly here in the work session. We do have 25 resolutions on the agenda today. I'm only going to highlight a couple of those, given that we have such great topics in the work session to follow. First one I wanted to highlight was Resolution 2025-51, which sets the proposed city of Waco 2020 tax rate at .776232 cents per $100 valuation. It also sets the public hearing date for September 8th to receive comments on the tax rate, and sets the date, time, and location of the meeting at which the Council will vote on the proposed tax rate as September 8th at 6:00 PM in the Bosque Theater of the Convention Center, as well as by electronic means in accordance with the Governor Abbott's emergency orders related to COVID-19. The next resolution I wanted to highlight is Resolution 2025-58, which approves a program project agreement between the Waco-McLennan County Economic Development Corporation and Tractor Supply Corporation. This agreement will allow for the retention of at least 400 full-time jobs at the Tractor Supply Facility, as well as facilitate improved traffic flow in the area, which, as the Council's aware, is home to multiple other businesses, as well as a large Baylor Scott &amp; White medical facility.
Hey Bradley, this is Hector. I just want to, thank you for highlighting this resolution. I'm very excited about this, that we are able to work with the corporation where we can, 400 full-time jobs can be saved, and also that it's going to make it safer on the streets, which, as we know, public safety is definitely a priority for Council. And so I just think these, this is definitely meeting some strategic goals for Council, and so I'm very excited to see this in the agenda today. So thank you for bringing it forward.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Just to echo Councilmember Sabido on that, love to see that we got the retention of 400 full-time jobs, and in the report it states that the base pay there is $14 an hour, and there's an average annual salary of over $30,000 a year. So excited that we have the opportunity to retain those jobs, and also love that with such a high-use road that's shared by so many different businesses, and even more to come hopefully in the future, that we're taking the opportunity to, you know, pay it back and pay it forward, so.
Thank you, Councilmembers. The last resolution I wanted to highlight is 2025-60, which nominates Mars Wrigley Confectionery as an enterprise project to the Office of the Governor, Economic Development Tourism, through the Economic Development Bank. This is a nomination for Mars to receive certain rebates of sales and use taxes generated at the state level, not at the local level. Mars anticipates over the next five years spending in excess of $5 million on capital improvement projects to upgrade and improve its manufacturing plant, and this will allow it to receive some of those expenditures back in the form of a rebate from the state. These projects that I'm mentioning will allow Mars to maintain industry-leading quality at the site, as well as production flexibility to meet differing customer demands. I did want to highlight for the Council and public, you know, Mars is an important corporate entity in our community. It actually is the largest taxpayer in the city of Waco, representing a little over 1% of our tax base in that one facility, and employs hundreds of Wacoans in high-quality manufacturing jobs. Today, we do have two ordinances on the agenda. Ordinance 2025-75 is a first reading. The city charter does require that administrative departments be established by ordinance, and this ordinance pertains specifically to Animal Services, which is now a department on its own, Community Services, which now includes Code Enforcement, Housing, and Community Development, and Development Services, which now includes Planning and Inspections. A couple of things I highlight there. First, each one of those departments, you're seeing a common word in each one, which is "services," and I think it's indicative of our culture that we're trying to create, to identify the city organization as a service-oriented organization. As you might remember, the reason these three moves are needed is, over this past fiscal year, we did have a retirement of a former director who had several of these groups under his departments, and the realignment that occurred over the last six months is allowing us to make these changes. Second ordinance to highlight is 2025-76, which is second reading on the Tourism Public Improvement District, the T-PID. And if there's no further questions, that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Bradley. We have received comment cards on Resolutions 2020-555, 572, 573, and 574, so those will be pulled from the consent agenda. Are there any additional items the Council would like to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, the consent agenda tonight will include Resolutions 2020-553, Resolution 2020-574, with the exception of Resolutions 2020-555, 572, 573, and 574. And I will turn it back to Bradley to introduce the next work session presentations.
Thanks, Mayor. I've been joined at the table here by Clint Peters, who's going to walk us through the public hearing items related to planning. Clint?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. We do have the eight public hearings that we'll go over. The first one being the public hearing for the subdivision plats. There we go. For the subdivision plats, we do have two plats this month. The first one is the final plat and construction plans of the H&amp;B Casparian Edition. This is a commercial subdivision plat on four and a half acres for three lots along the Highway 84 corridor next to H&amp;B Construction. They are expanding their operations on part of it and then creating another commercial lot. This subdivision did require extension of a public sewer line that has submitted plans, and all plating and construction plans have been met, and Plan Commission has recommended an approval of this plat. The next plat is for the final plat and construction plans of the Copper Springs Edition Phase 7. This is a single-family residential subdivision in the China Spring area along Tree Lake Road. It's 23 lots on eight and a half acres that connects to the Lakeland Meadows subdivision. This shows the preliminary plat in Phase 7 is in the left-hand upper corner there. Get your orientation here. It connects back to the Lakeland Meadows addition. You can see there's a large open-space green area for drainage and potentially for a future park adjacent to that. And then this shows the actual addition that they're building. They've met all the plating and construction comments on this one, and Plan Commission did recommend this one for approval as well. The next public hearing, 543, is a special permit for a short terminal type 2 in R1B zoning at 1320 Hillside Avenue. This is a single-family home at the corner of Hillside and Parkwood in our Brookview Neighborhood Association, just south of Bosque Boulevard. This is a type 2, which would allow the owners to rent out the whole house to a group one at a time without the owner being on site. We did mail out 25 notices on this, and we had two return in opposition, but one of the persons that sent a card in opposition, after talking to the applicant, rescinded their opposition, so we just had the one card in opposition. This is a picture of the home. It's a four-bedroom home that was recently renovated. They do have parking on site for the ordinance requirement. The owner does live out of state but has a local management group that will manage the property. Plan Commission did recommend approval of this by a vote of 12 to 0. The next public hearing, 544, is a public hearing for a special permit for self-storage warehouses and C2 zoning on property located at 1805 and 1811 Webster Avenue. This is a warehouse property near the intersection of Webster and 18th Street that was recently rezoned from industrial zoning to commercial zoning. The owner is in the process of renovating the existing buildings for self-storage, 17 units self-storage on the site in that existing building. We had no opposition on this one, and Plan Commission recommended approval of it as well. The next public hearing, 545, is a public hearing to consider a rezoning from M2 to O3 on property located at 202 Hillsborough Drive. This is an existing commercial building on Hillsborough near the intersection of Elm Avenue and Hillsborough Drive and the Northeast Riverside Neighborhood Association. This is again another recently renovated building that the owner would like to get the zoning in conformance. We do have some industrial zoning that's left over from several decades ago that has not been changed, and so the change actually brings the zoning into conformance with our land use comprehensive plan. Here is a picture of the building. You can see it was recently renovated, and it did, this actually did use some of our TIF funds, that City Center Waco facade program that they use for fixing up buildings in the TIF zone. Plan Commission did recommend 12 to 0, and we did get a letter of support from the Neighborhood Association in favor of this, and no opposition. The next public hearing, 546, is another rezoning from C3 to R2. This is at 2824 North 32nd Street, up in our Dean Highland Neighborhood Association near MacArthur Avenue. This is about a .2-acre vacant lot that faces 32nd Street that is predominantly a single-family in nature. There are some commercial uses along MacArthur. You can see there, there's an animal clinic and automotive place and a cell tower in that area, but the majority of the use is our single-family, and 32nd Street is a local street. And you can see in our land use plan, that yellow area is called for it to be residential land use in our comprehensive plan, but the zoning is commercial C3 zoning, and so the applicant has requested to change this to residential zoning to allow for residential uses on that lot. And then here's a picture of the vacant lot, looking back towards 32nd Street. We did get one card in opposition from one of the commercial property owners along MacArthur that also has commercial property along 32nd Street. Their main concern was the impact on that commercial property with this rezoning. This property is not adjacent to the person that spoke in opposition, so it does not have any impact as far as development restrictions on their property. Plan Commission did recommend approval of this by a vote of 12 to 0. And then the last zoning case, 547, public hearing, is at 2529 Spade Avenue. This is about a half-acre lot at the corner of Spade and 26th Street in South Waco and our University Neighborhood Association. Again, this is another one for the comprehensive plan calls for it to be residential, and currently it's C2, but they are asking for it to be rezoned back to residential. This property has been used for a storage yard, for a contractor shop, and the owner wants to convert that over back to residential. No opposition on this one, and Plan Commission recommended by a vote of 12 to 0. Our next public hearing is dealing with an alley abandonment. This is located between Mary Avenue and Jackson Avenue in downtown, and then between 7th Street, which was abandoned, and 8th Street, across the railroad tracks from the Magnolia silos. This property is owned on both sides by Texas Metering Device, which is in the process of being sold to the Czech Brewing Company LLC for redevelopment, and they would like to incorporate that abandoned alley into their development plans. The alley is currently built, and there are utilities located in that. This is looking from 8th Street down the alley, so there is a condition on the recommendation to either retain an easement or relocate the utilities out of the alley, and this is looking back the other direction towards 8th Street where the alley is. There was no opposition to this one, and Plan Commission recommended approval of it as well. And then our last public hearing is dealing with our ordinance change in our subdivision ordinance, to require all lots in our ETJ not immediately connected to sewer system be a minimum of one acre in size to use onsite sewer facility or otherwise known as a septic tank. This is an ordinance that we're bringing to you that goes along with a long history of water quality protection efforts that the city has undergone to protect not only our surface water sources but our groundwater sources. And I just wanted to highlight some of those efforts that go along with this. We have, as much as you know, that we worked, a lot of effort went into working with our upstream, the Bosque River watershed, with some of our agricultural uses as dairies to improve runoff practices. We also constructed the Lake Waco's wetlands to filter water coming into the lake. We had annexation policies in the late '90s and early 2000s in growth areas in order to convert septic systems over to sewer service, and these areas include China Spring and Highway 84. The annexation laws are actually different now, where we could not do annexation like we did back then, and so that's another reason why we're looking at these changes, to increase the lot size. And then, as y'all are well aware of, we have, the city has undergone significant investments at the direction of City Council to improve our infrastructure, along with our wastewater master plan for programming or repair and replacement of our aging wastewater system, which has helped water quality. of our aging wastewater system, which has helped water quality. So one of the things we started looking at when we were looking at this ordinance change is developments happening in our ETJ, and this is a map over the last five years. We've had 13 subdivisions with multi-lot subdivisions where infrastructure's been installed. And you can see a lot of those are in our watershed for Lake Waco, and then the rest of them are using groundwater for the water source. And historically, these subdivisions have been large lot subdivisions, more than an acre. But in the last couple of years, we've had numerous subdivisions come in with high lot counts under an acre. And that has provided some concern to us about the concentration of these systems on half-acre lots. As these systems age, they have the potential to contaminate our groundwater and water source, especially if there's a high concentration of them. And I can just point out a couple of them on this map. So number three, number one, and number eight are subdivisions that have been submitted with half-acre to acre lot sizes. One, number three, being 190 lots. Number eight being 44 lots, and number one being 36 lots. So trying to have a larger lot size will help reduce that concentration of septic tanks that is the concern for our water quality efforts in the area. So we are proposing that the lot sizes be increased to an acre. Our current ordinance is actually, inside the city limits, you have to have 20-acre minimum lot size for a septic system. And then ETJ, you have to have an acre for systems that are using aerobic surface irrigation systems. So we already have a one-acre minimum lot size for those systems. And then we have the half-acre lot size for the subsurface soil absorption systems, which is a low dose where they put the treated water directly into the ground. So this proposed ordinance would make the standard across the board one acre. Again, that would help simplify our ordinance. Currently, we have two different standards, which does cause some confusion where they'll come in with the half-acre lots, do a study that says their soil is compatible for those half-acre lots. And then when they actually get into building the homes, because of the size of the homes or pools or outbuildings, the actual subsurface systems don't work. And then so you're working between two standards. And so this proposed ordinance would increase the minimum lot size for all septic systems to one acre with all existing lots or tracts of land being platted under an acre. Can still use the subsurface systems, subject to meeting all the local and state health regulations that are in place now. We did get some feedback from Heart of Texas Builders Association that would like to see it remain with the current state minimum standards of the half-acre and one-acre rules. I would say that that is the minimum standard. It's called out by the state. But the state law does allow cities to increase that minimum based on, you know, public health reasons and water quality reasons. And a lot of our peer cities across the state have a one-acre across-the-board minimum. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on the ordinance change or any of the public hearings.
This is Holmes speaking to this last one, 549, on the change on septic tanks going from half-acre to an acre. I mean, I get it that we, you know, the water quality in the ETJ needs to be good, and we have some risk of contamination if we have, you know, a lot of septic systems on very small lots. I get that. But what I'd like to know on this is, you know, the state recommendation is a half an acre, which is what we have now. We're going up, you propose to go up to an acre. Can we get better data on what other cities are doing or what other peer cities are doing in their ETJ? I know you mentioned it, but I haven't gone online to see the data on that. It would be good for me to, I'd like to see that. The second comment I'll have here is, we're kind of changing the rules in the middle of game for some developers. And I don't, you know, as an old investor, I don't like that. So I want to make sure, if we make any changes to this, that we have, you know, a runway to whatever the effective date is. I think the language, proposed language said September 1. Is that right?
That's correct.
But I just think, like the concept we're talking about on impact fees, I think we need to be thinking about grandfathering some of this or existing plating should have some respect to. And again, I want to see what other cities are doing, and if it's going to three-quarters of an acre or whatever. I just, I want to see what peer cities are doing, any ETJs in a growing community like ours. Because I want to be sensitive to the developers on this. And again, I don't like changing rules in the middle of the game. I know sometimes it's necessary, and I'm all for good water quality. But it seemed like we oversimplified the ordinance change here by just saying, changing two things really, half an acre to an acre and giving them two weeks to comply without really knowing. I want to know what other cities are doing before I can support this.
Well, hey Clint, so at what point in the process, if this goes into effect on September 1st, you know, in terms of the development and working with you guys, would they be allowed to grandfather in? Should this be adopted and go into effect on September 1st?
Yes, sir. So the way the ordinance, proposed ordinance is written, any existing lots or existing tracts under an acre will still be able to use the subsurface system. And that does include preliminary plats that have been approved by council would still be able to plat, final plat lots under a half acre or under the acre. So anything that's already existing would not be subject to the new one-acre rule.
So long as it's been at least preliminary platted.
That's correct.
At this point. Okay, okay. Thanks. Well, I mean, I understand my colleagues' concerns. However, I, and, you know, and I think there has been some parallels drawn to, you know, several years back when we kind of stopped the water rebates for new housing development and the kind of the abruptness of that. In this instance, I think, and I actually voted against that because I shared what Councilmember Holmes, the concerns that he'd expressed. In this instance, I'm given the criteria that you have kind of outlined as to why this is important. Water quality is definitely one of them, but particularly the change in law that has undermined our ability to annex the growth areas in the ETJ adjacent to our city limits. I appreciate, again, those concerns, but I think that the, that what you have said, and again, in particular, the way that the state law has changed and has curtailed our ability to manage that, manage the growth in the ETJ reasonably gives necessary cause for us to act in an expedient manner on this particular item. And I'm supportive of doing it. I'm supportive of going to the one acre. And I'm supportive of the timeline that you've expressed. And I think that when you look at other cities, the data will bear out that this, that we're just doing, even though we're going a little beyond what the state minimums are, we're just adopting the best practices that you'll see in city statewide.
And just to clarify one more step further, the examples that I showed you, the ETJ developments that I showed you would all be exempt from this rule because they're already all preliminary platted and building out. So those.
Okay.
Hey Clint, this is Hector. So I, like Councilmember Holmes, have some concerns as well, especially about that we are making this change. I understand that some people or some developers will be grandfathered in, and some developments will be grandfathered in. But I still think that, for me, I don't have enough data yet to feel comfortable pushing this forward. Question for you, instead of a full acre, one complete acre, would three-quarters of an acre do the trick? And is there a reason why that is not a consideration?
We can consider that, you know, it would be beneficial to talk to the Health Department about the, you know, what that would do as far as, you know, because the concern is when you have high concentrations of lots and over time, you know, the long-term maintenance of them. And I guess it would be good to get some feedback on what they thought about three-quarter acre lots.
Well, I just would be curious to see what the outcome would be, only because I'm a firm believer that we can make more sound decisions the more information we have. And so, you know, while I definitely understand the reasoning behind wanting to do this and the purpose, maybe the execution, maybe could we work on a little bit? And so I personally, like Councilmember Holmes, would like a little bit more information on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Clint, let me say that I agree with John Kennard, with his reasoning and with the approach of going ahead and implementing this as best practices. I do think it is a good idea to get the pure information to, peer city information to us before the second reading so that we have an opportunity to look at that and see whether we want to make any adjustments prior to that. But this is a critical piece to keeping our water quality where it should be, where we want it to be. And we've done so many important things over the years to protect our water quality that I think taking this step now makes a lot of sense. So that's where I am on it at this point. Are there any questions on any of, on this or any of the other questions or comments on this or any of the other public hearings?
Hey, sorry, I just have one thing going back to the special permit for the self-storage facility on 18th. I just want to make sure, I mean, because there's a special permit tied to it anyway. As obviously right now, we're rerouting a lot of traffic through those, through that corridor, 17th and 18th Street because of the construction of I-35. I'd love to use this as a starting point and opportunity to start to slowly beautify 17th and 18th Street. So if there's any way to tie some sort of design standard or something to that special permit, and the pictures in the attachment look great. It looks like it's shaping up to look sharp anyway. But just going forward as these things pop up, and I don't know if this is something that, you know, we need to do a larger sort of look at 17th and 18th Street as a corridor. But as we're moving forward, especially with traffic being diverted there in a really heavy way right now because of I-35, I think it's a good time to try and take advantage of an opportunity to add a really sharp-looking building as you're going down there. So.
Very good. Any other questions or comments on the public hearings? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Clint.
Thank you.
Good presentation.
Mayor, our next work session, Clint's going to actually stay with us for Work Session 202537, which is a discussion of the impact fee calculations and the next steps of our impact fee study. He'll be joined by Eddie Haas and Jessica Vassar from Freezing Nichols. As while we get the screen set up appropriately, just a reminder, we've been, Clint's been leading the impact fee conversation for the better part of probably two years now, attempting to get us to a closer opportunity to where we can adopt impact fees and present a policy that makes sense for the council to consider. So I'll let Clint do intros for Eddie and Jessica and get started. Thank you, Bradley. Yes, this, we are on the last phase of our impact fee study, which is the calculated fees part of it, and then starting to work through policy recommendations and considerations for the actual ordinance. We do have a resolution also on the agenda, 555, which will set the public hearing for the impact fee ordinance for the October 6 meeting, so I wanted to mention that. Part of the study, we did hire a consultant, Freezing Nichols, to help us through this process as required by state law. They've been a great asset in working with not only us but our stakeholders in this process, the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, and then stakeholder groups with our developers and neighborhood associations as well. And so they're going to go through the fee calculations, kind of the science behind how the fees were calculated, and then talk about some of the next steps in formulating recommendations and considerations for policy setting for the fees. So Jessica Vassar is going to talk, start off with the water and wastewater, and then Eddie Haas will talk about the roadway. So I'll turn it over to Jessica.
All right. Is Eddie here with us on the panel?
I am. I got you.
Great. And am I sharing my screen with the presentation?
Yes, we can do that.
Whatever is best for y'all.
Do you want to try to share that, Jessica?
Yes, I'm pulling it up right now. Now see it?
Yes.
Got it.
All right. Let's get started. Just as a reminder, impact fees are a one-time fee that are charged to new development. And I know we've been working through this process, and we've been talking about this for a while. So if you have any questions as we're going through this, don't hesitate to interrupt us and ask anything. The first thing we're going to talk about is water and wastewater impact fees. Then Eddie will talk about roadway, and then we'll kind of talk about some policy and schedule and next steps. A look at where we've been on the impact fee process. The first thing we did was develop our land use assumptions. And using those land use assumptions, they informed the capital improvements plan for water, wastewater, and roadway. We had our public hearing on the land use and CIP. Because this is a new program, we're required to have two public hearings. The first one on land use and CIP, and the second one on the consideration of the adoption of impact fees. At this point, we have gone through our technical calculations, put together our report, and now we are leading up to the second public hearing, which is proposed for October 6, like Clint mentioned. For water and wastewater impact fees, the first thing we did was define our service area. And that's what you see on the slide here. For water, wastewater, our service area is the city limits and the ETJ. And you'll see that's a little bit different on the roadway side of things because roadway is limited to only the city limits. This is our water impact fee CIP, and we've seen this before. And what you see here is we have both projects that are existing projects that the city has already built that still have capacity to serve growth, and then proposed projects. And we have water lines, pump stations, tanks, all sorts of water system improvements that we've identified for growth over the next 10 years because impact fees are looking out over a 10-year window. And what we've done is, using the land use assumptions, we have gone through each project and determined what portion of that project is serving growth over the next 10 years. And so I'm not going to go through this entire slide, but let's just look at this first example. Project W1, we said that 50% of this project is being utilized by customers that are already on your water system. So that portion of the project cannot be counted towards impact fees. And by 2030, we estimate that it will be 75% utilized. So if we subtract the 75 or the 50 from the 75, that tells us that over the next 10 years, we estimate that 25% of this project is going to be utilized by growth in the next 10 years. So if we multiply that 25% by the capital cost of this project, that gives us our 10-year eligible CIP cost in this far-right column. And adding all of that information up for all of our water impact fee CIP projects, we come up with an eligible cost of about $34 million for water. Anyone have any questions on this before I move on?
Yeah, real quick, Jessica, just what happens if those estimates don't bear out?
Yes. So this is based on our best, you know, the best knowledge that we have right now. And obviously, impact fees are required to be updated every five years. And if we saw a big change in the land use assumptions before the five-year window, we would want to reevaluate, maybe looking at impact fees sooner than five years. But there is some protection, you know, no one's going to get this exactly right. So we won't be in a lot of trouble. And we are using conservative numbers, so we're not estimating things to be too highly utilized.
Okay. Yeah, no, the five-year review window makes sense, and that's the answer to my question. Thank you.
Okay, great. Next, we have our wastewater CIP. And again, we have existing and proposed projects shown on this map here. And we have lift stations and interceptor projects and quite a few treatment plant projects, including China Spring, Bullhide. So a lot of cost with wastewater treatment on our wastewater impact fee CIP. And you can see that when we look at this number for the eligible wastewater cost, we're about $63.7 million, so much larger than our water CIP cost. And you'll see these numbers again when we get to our calculations. water CIP cost. And you'll see these numbers again when we get to our calculations. For water and wastewater, the single family service unit in Waco is a five eighths inch meter. And what we want to do for impact fees is equate all of our larger meter sizes back to a single family meter. And so we use the American Water Works Association, AWWA, to tell us what is the maximum flow rate for each of these different meter sizes. And AWWA says that a five eighths inch meter can safely pass fifteen gallons per minute GPM. And it has a service unit equivalent of one. If we come down here to our four inch meter, a four inch meter can safely pass six hundred and thirty gallons per minute. And so that is forty two times the size of a five eighths inch meter. And so we're going to use this when we're looking at our growth and service units, but we're also going to use this when we're looking at the implementation of the impact fees. A development with a four inch meter would be charged forty two times the impact fee of a single family home. And looking at our growth and service unit, this is important because it's part of our impact the equation. We have the number of meters for each different type of meter and meter size for twenty twenty, and this was provided by the city. That's what you see here. And then using those service unit equivalents that we saw on the last slide, we multiply our meters by our service unit equivalent to come up with how many service units we have in twenty twenty. And then we used our growth rates from our land use assumptions to determine our number of meters that we'll have in twenty thirty, converted those to service units. And if we subtract our twenty twenty service units from our twenty thirty service units, we come up with a growth of twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty three service units over the next ten years. So this is going to be the denominator of our impact fee equation. So what we see in this equation here is that we have our eligible costs. So it's the thirty four million dollars on water and the sixty sixty four million dollars on wastewater. And chapter three ninety five, the Texas Local Government Code requires us to take a fifty percent credit. This is just one of the things to make sure we're not overcharging our new customers. So we're going to have our eligible cost divided by fifty percent that credit and then divided by our growth and service units. So this is what it all boils down to. We're going to go through the water side. We have thirty four million dollars. In row two, we're taking the fifty percent credit, so dividing row one in half, we come up with seventeen million dollars. Chapter three ninety five says that we can include the financing cost of our study. So rows three and four, the financing cost. And we had New Gen calculate those as a sub to us. And then we add all that up for water. We have twenty three million dollars divided by twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty three new service units. The maximum water impact fee is one thousand eight hundred and four dollars, and the maximum wastewater impact fee is three thousand five hundred and seventy four dollars. And what this means is that as council, you can make the decision to set your impact fee at anywhere from zero dollars up to this amount for a single family home. Any questions before we move on to the roadway side of things?
Yeah, this is Holmes. As I looked at the the service units equivalent calculation and how we're using water flow is a critical part of that calculation, obviously. And I think I understand it, but at some point, the costs, the hard costs of putting in the infrastructure is digging the trench and putting in the pipe. Whether you put in a five eighths inch pipe or ten inch pipe, that's that's the hard cost of that infrastructure. And I understand it thereby has a stress on the system of additional volume from that particular user. But doesn't a lot of that get picked up by the by the fee after the after the improvement is put in? If the guy's using ten times the water, he's paying for ten times the water.
He's gonna have a different water. He's gonna have higher water rates because he's using more water.
Yeah, that's that was a logic I was picking up. So I didn't quite understand the multiplier here. I mean, I get, you know, you increase it from a half inch to an inch, it's not double the flow, it's whatever, triple, four times or whatever. I'm just wondering, is this is this a is this a method of calculation that's used nationally? Or is this one that Freeze Nichols kind of has?
This is a pretty standard method to determine what different meter sizes are using. You'll see this in a lot of other cities ordinances is that they'll have a table with all the different meter sizes and the service unit equivalents to determine what is the fee for a larger meter size. And it is because these larger meters are putting additional stress on your system. They're going to require additional, you know, water capacity to serve their development. So they should, in theory, pay a higher fee.
Right. And I could, I'm buying into that after the fact, after the pipes laid down, but it seems like hard costs incrementally isn't going to be that much different on the front end of putting whatever size of meters, whatever size of piping you have here. But let's go on. I mean, I just I just wonder if this is a standard way. This is a Freeze Nichols tested way.
Oh, it's a pretty standard.
Are there other ways that other cities do it?
Not that I have seen, but I'd be happy to look into that for you.
Okay.
Hey, Jessica, I also have a question. So I I get the the equation to come up with the maximum impact fee per service unit. Would would you suggest or recommend the same being for an area where the infrastructure is set or the area is not as dense, still having that same equation?
Well, the equation would stay the same, but definitely by policy, we can carve out specific areas. So if we're trying to incentivize redevelopment in areas where we already have infrastructure or infill development, we can exclude areas by policy from our impact fee. What we'll want to do, though, is make sure that we're very specific in our ordinance so that there aren't any questions where one person is getting their fee waived or reduced and maybe somebody else isn't getting that same consideration.
Okay, okay, that's so that was my question. Yeah. So I mean, so there differences can be made even in policy change contingent upon where the development is taking place in the city, whether it's in the core or on the outskirts of it.
Okay, so just making sure we we clearly explain what that is. So everybody feels like they have fair footing.
And Councilmember Sabido, we, as we get done with the roadway impact fee portion of the presentation, Clint's gonna provide some guidance on potential policy, you know, recommendations that I think will give us a a platform to discuss all all the impact fees kind of collectively together. As we think about geography and timing and those considerations that the council may want to have in its policy. The other thing I wanted to highlight on this slide in particular, if it hadn't been made obvious through the conversation is if in our current scenario, you know, we don't collect any impact fees, which means all of these improvements are dealt with within the water rate or the utility rate scenario. So if we don't act and we don't move forward in a direction that that generates an impact fee, that's going to create significant pressure to either delay infrastructure projects or increase our utility rates.
Okay, thank you all. Wonderful. No, thank you for that. That helps me. It gives me a broader picture. So thank you for that.
Okay, this is Eddie Haas, and I'll go over the roadway component, similar to Jessica's overview. There's a lot of technical that's involved. One of the key differences in the roadside is that we're dealing with an open system of improvements. It the roadway is accessible to others, not within Waco, people cutting through Waco, consuming some of that capacity. It's still a consumption based model. However, the the impact fee, the ultimate impact fee is based on travel characteristics. You know, fast food restaurants generate traffic more than, say, a shopping center or a residential. So we'll we'll talk about an equivalency table that has a tailored servicing equivalent by land use. And so the technical number crunch deals with what is the cost to provide a unit of service or a unit of road on the ground? So we're dealing with one step one, and then step two is based on size and intensity of development. That's how you estimate the impact fee. So with this with the open system of improvements, the other thing that is is tied down, and why won't it forward? Jessica, a little help there? There we go. Roadways, we have we have service areas. The three ninety five state mandate says that roadway impact fees are confined to your city limits, primarily because you have an open system of improvements. But further, to make sure that fees aren't spent, say, in service, collected in service area seven and spent on projects in service area nine, we have sub areas or service areas. So the city's been carved out into eleven service areas. Thinking about the ultimate potential growth of the city, you know, ultimately, some of the areas that potentially could be voluntarily or whatever annexed in the future will grow into service area. So we've taken that into consideration in the development of structure. So we have eleven service areas that have been compiled for the roadway. The roadway component of the impact fee. And so, and again, to ensure that fees are spent on projects that are in the vicinity of where new growth growth is occurring. On the next slide, we have the kind of a process that we had undertaken in the derivation of the CIP, the ultimate cost per service unit. And that's your thoroughfare plan. That comes straight from the from the comprehensive plan, the Waco twenty forty plan, image there on the on the top right. That plan set in motion the potential definition of projects where we went through a process of looking at strictly arterial or collector class streets. We looked at based on forecasted growth or the ten year growth by these service areas, what potential projects could be considered? Then working through with staff, with the MPO, comments received from the advisory committee, we developed the ultimate CIP that'll be that was then set before you at last March as part of that initial public hearing. The next slide has the the, I'm sorry, prior to that, let's get to the, how do we generate ten year VMT? And that is from the land use assumptions report that was part of that initial public hearing. Waco is going to grow, expected to grow a certain amount over the ten year window. It's going to generate different kinds of land uses for roads because there's different travel characteristics. We looked at residential growth in the second column, and then we also looked at the non residential growth in columns three, four, and five. And because primarily there's traffic generated at different levels, third column deals with industrial type development. Fourth column, office site development, fifth column retail. But more importantly, we've some we've summed the service units of growth or the vehicle miles, that's the service unit of growth by service area because that's going to become the ultimate denominator for each one of the calculations. So we have a ten year VMT of about forty, almost forty nine thousand vehicle miles. The impact fee CIP, the roadway CIP is depicted here on the graphic here. We have forty two project segments that were identified through the process. And these projects that have been identified are strictly capacity adds. These are future lanes, not any recoupment projects, only new projects in future lanes yet to be built. We went, we decided to go that route just to keep it clean for this for the initial program. Doesn't mean we can't come back in and add projects that have been built, recoup excess capacity, those kinds of things. So we've identified projects, and so they're kind of color coded by the number of lanes we're adding that ultimately gets you to thoroughfare standard. Okay? No projects were identified in service area five or service area eight. So we do have forty two projects on the list. We developed some project cost estimating. Individual cost estimate worksheets there on the next slide. Yeah. Individual cost estimate worksheets for construction, using twelve month averages, using bid tab information for recently constructed projects, engineering right of way, right of way at a dollar a square foot. And that's mainly to get projects right of way to ultimate standard. Okay, so it's the net increase in right of way. We did have one of our sub consultant team members, Walker Partners, review the data, provided feedback on the unit cost estimates, but that became the basis for capital cost development. So on the next slide, we have a summary of the overall citywide cost of the roadway program, sixty two million dollars. You see the individual breakouts for that, but that's system wide. You have to recall that while Jessica only has one calculation for water and one for wastewater, we get eleven. Okay? So on the next slide, what we have is kind of the the kind of the the approach of how we calculate that cost per service unit. But we're only showing two service areas so that we can kind of summarize things here from here. In in the case of service area one, we 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 had identified really only one project. There was Golson Road. And the capital cost associated with that was two hundred and four thousand dollars. The the determination on the recoverable percentage of that, in other words, what is needed as a result of ten year growth was about sixty six thousand dollars. The debt service associated with that is thirty nine thousand that was calculated by New Gen. They did the same approach for the water and wastewater. We netted out any interest earnings. But what we have is we have a total cost attributable to future growth over the ten year window of about a hundred and two thousand dollars in service area one. The VMT or the service units of growth in service area one, fifteen thousand nine hundred, one oh two divided by fifteen, six dollars per service unit. Same approach would be for service area two. We had several other several three or four project segments in there, but that cost per service unit was six ninety seven. On the next slide, you can kind of see what the variation in the cost per service unit is. Obviously, in service area five and eight, no costs, no projects. But we have six dollars in service area one, which is the core of the of the city. But you can see the range, how it how it jumps from six dollars all the way up to thirteen twenty four in service area twenty seven. Okay? These are the the cost estimates were all based on conservative approach. We did develop some minor contingencies for add ons, but we mainly went with a conservative approach primarily because as projects are being built and we got to plug in the actual costs, we don't want by service area to have a difference greater than ten percent because it puts the city in a potential refund situation. So what the cost per service unit reflects is what it costs in each one of these service areas to put roadway capacity on the ground. Okay? All right. So this graphic depicts basically the summary of those, and you can see service area one. And and the six dollars is that credited rate. So we've we've taken fifty percent of the capital costs in each one of these service areas that are highlighted in the orange bars, and then based on the cost necessitated or attributable to growth, we've we've calculated that. But what you can see is in the yellow bars, that's the actual cost to put those roads on the ground at the credited rate highlighted in the blue, you can see the variation. So one of the policy considerations that we're going to get into is, well, you know, it costs six dollars a service unit in service area one, it costs nine hundred and fifty dollars a service unit in service area seven. Should there be some consideration to kind of balance this thing out a little bit? So in other words, you don't have someone saying service area six saying, well, you know, I'll just go develop over here because it's a lot cheaper than in service area seven. So a lot of communities have found some kind of in the middle, if you will. And so what that in the middle would be, and just for example purposes, we said let's take service area two because primarily there's there's four service areas above the cost of service area two, and there were four below it. But if you took service area two as the controlling as the controlling factor, that would mean that in service areas three, seven, ten, and eleven, that number would be capped at six ninety seven, six ninety seven, six ninety seven, so on. But you'd have the act potentially up to the maximum in in the other ones. That number could be set wherever you wanted it to be. Okay, we just, for example purposes, put that down. So what does that mean in terms of the fee? On the next slide, sorry. So we're talking about the cost per service unit. That does not mean it's the actual impact fee. Different land uses generate traffic based on on the actual travel characteristics, trip generation rates, trip lengths, vehicles mile, vehicle mile. So we have a land use equivalency table that's broken into five major categories. Residential, office, commercial, institutional, industrial and institutional. And we have a series of subcategories. On the next slide, it's a little detail to kind of show you what what this thing is ultimately going to look like. So you have a land use. You have the independent variable. You have the trip rate, trip length, and the far right column is the service unit equivalent. So in the case of, say, one single family residence, one dwelling unit, oops, go back, Jessica, one dwelling unit generates three point two vehicle miles of demand. Okay, so as development applications come before staff, they're going to be considering size of development, intensity of development, and then therefore the more intense, the more capacity being consumed, obviously, the higher fee. So it is a two step process on the next slide that we kind of identify. Step one would be the size, the individual land uses associated with it with the development application, the service unit equivalent, which generates total number of vehicle miles generated by site. Step two would be those total vehicle miles generated by a site by the cost per service unit would yield the impact fee. Okay? Water wastewater, it's relatively simple. We have that one number eighteen oh four for one inch. So it's eighteen oh four times the cost per meter size. There is your impact fee. So by way of example, on the next slide, we have new development, and this is an example, located in service area two with a collection rate of six ninety seven per vehicle mile, eighteen oh four for water, thirty five seventy four for wastewater. The way the the way the actual fee would be developed would be one dwelling unit times the service unit generation times the cost per service unit equals twenty two hundred and thirty dollars for roads, water is eighteen oh four, wastewater thirty five. So the impact fee for one residence, one single family dwelling unit is seventy six hundred dollars. Again, for the roads, just like water and wastewater, we're identifying the maximum you can go up to. You can go anywhere in between on those numbers. So any question on how we derive? So any question on how we derived the cost per service unit and how it might start applying? Because we're really going to start having fun here in a second. You know how exciting it's impact fees, but okay. So when we, and we, we put the slide up here specifically because on the road piece, we're dealing with eleven different service areas with different calculated maxes. Water and wastewater is the same, but what are going to be some of your policy considerations to be thinking about? Do you want a uniform fee and across the board fee? Some cities say, we want residential to be fifteen hundred dollars. Work it backwards, whatever that percentage is, or the maximum that you can go to, just work it out that way. Some communities say, we would like a water and wastewater at fifty percent and roads at twenty five percent. You know, all of this is by policy, right? We, we go through a lot of math, they get to that technical, then we're in the policy consideration phase. Could have a, a collection rate for residential at one number and non-residential at another number. If there's the desire to incentivize one or the other. There could be other special considerations, we call it. We're seeing a lot of communities that are starting new programs out. They'll start low and incrementally increase them per year, okay? So there's, that's one approach. You could set the effective date later. Let's say we adopt the impact fee program and it starts January one, twenty twenty one. Well, you could say, well, you know what, we're going to have the effective date really starting in, in June, complete with the one year grandfather for development already in the pipe. So messing with the effective date is also an opportunity. Targeted area strategies. Some communities have incentives if you're on the, an interstate corridor or a state highway or you're in a, in a historic district or a pit or whatever, there could be some targeted strategies. There, there could be some exempt approved plats that have already come through the process that were previously exempt. There could be then also some previous other plat considerations. All this would, would be by policy. And to your question, council members, sub deal about exterior, if you're developing on the periphery versus in the core, Fort Worth has done that. If you're in one of the service areas outside of Loop Eight Twenty, that fee is a lot higher than if you're within, within the interstate. So same kind of thing, if there's some thought, say in service area one, two, or whatever to, you know, incentivize within the core of the community, that's also a consideration. Anything, anything can apply as part of policy, but as long as we document it, it'll be critically important. Fort Worth also has, if you're a, an industry that generates, you know, X number of employees, we'll reduce it by impact fee by X percent. You can have incentives from that perspective. So a variety of things that be, that can be considered. So let's get back to on the next slide that.
I just, I want to apologize because I didn't get the change here on grandfathering. And I, we, I know we intended to change that language there, so I apologize for, I know that the version that the city had had been updated.
Yeah, exempt approved flats, I think is what we said. Okay, so on the next slide, we're kind of talking about the roadway piece again. Here, here's the actual now the impact fee. The previous slide, we showed the cost per service unit, but here's the impact fee for roads only. So you see that in that, remember that, that calculation in service area two at six ninety seven, that's twenty two hundred and thirty dollars. Well, you can kind of see what would happen if you said, all right, we're going to collect everything at fifty percent of max. You, you can see the variation in fee. To compound that on the next slide is once, once you tack on the water and wastewater component, you can see the variation in the fee. And so there, there is some tendency to try to normalize the roads or find some happy medium or something because the water and wastewater is pretty much static, okay? So that'll be one of your consideration points, and what do you want to do by service area for roads? The other one would be, well, let's think about what are other communities doing? Oh, sorry, here's a, this, this map here depicts what that total cost would be. So one single family resident, based on the, that scenario of that six ninety seven would be five thirty nine in service area one, it would be seventy six oh nine, sixty nine two. But the others would be the, the same, seventy six oh nine, seventy six oh nine. That's because they were capped at that six ninety seven. So again, policy decision. But to kind of further, we, we, we took a look at, well, what are some of our peer cities, you know, doing? And, and we, we identified a couple here primarily because these are communities with university institutions of higher learning within the community. We have Denton, Georgetown, Round Rock, Waco, Fort Worth, College Station, and Arlington. Each one of these communities have university there. But more importantly, you know, in this slide depicts the actual impact fee in each one of these communities. In other words, this is the adopted rate, you know, you're collecting, you can assess at one rate, but you're deciding to collect at another, okay? So this is the adopted rate at each one of these cities. So the impact fee for one single family residence in Waco, we had that one example of at six ninety seven for roads and then fifty percent for the others at seventy, seventy two hundred, whatever that number was. Yeah, seventy six hundred. But for one single family residence in Denton, it's twelve thousand dollars. In Georgetown, it's about eleven thousand, say two hundred. Down in College Station, it's a little over about five thousand dollars. And so each one of these cities, they had their own maximums calculated. The roads, the number of service units or service areas vary by its community. Oh, by the way, we're not, Georgetown hasn't fully adopted their program, so their number is here without the road piece. So you tack on roads, they're quickly probably going to go to the far left here. So in, in the purpose of showing this is, let's say if, if Waco were to use six ninety seven where possible, that you'd probably land in the middle, okay? And, and Jessica, what are the numbers, the percentages that they could have charged?
Yeah, because it's something to think about when you're looking at your neighbors is, did they adopt their maximum? Did they adopt a quarter of their maximum? So just as a point of reference, it's kind of all over the board. But Denton's program was done in twenty nineteen. They adopted the maximum for water and wastewater and about a quarter for roadway. Round Rock was adopted in twenty sixteen, and they're doing about twenty to thirty percent of maximum. Fort Worth was adopted in twenty sixteen, and they're doing about eighty percent of the maximum. College Station was adopted in twenty seventeen. They're doing seventeen percent on water, fifty four percent on wastewater, and about a third on roadway. And Arlington was adopted in twenty seventeen. They're doing a hundred percent on wastewater, fifty percent on water, and about a quarter on roadway.
Yeah, between twenty to twenty five percent on roads.
Yeah.
And, and these numbers are kind of an average for the Waco, we just used that service area two, right? But these are kind of an average of service areas because each one of those communities have multiple roadway service areas. All right.
May I ask a question on the, on this slide real quick, please? I see that Waco is probably the smallest or one of the, or second to the smallest on this graph with the cities compared. For other areas that are similar to size in Waco, do you find the same difference in percentages? Or is it pretty, is it pretty uniform?
It's, it's, it varies by community. You know, each one has their own vision of, and, and economic incentives and things like that. So it really varies by community. That's really all I can say. We had that question from the development group, and we are going to try to research some of that to see if there's any correlation between size of city with Waco.
This is Holmes. I, I'm sorry, Hector, go ahead.
I'm done. Go ahead, Fred.
Wait, um, follow up to Hector's comment. Do we have data on peer cities that don't have impact fees at all? Because this one shows the ones, some of them, but like our traditional Abilene, Amarillo, Tyler, Corpus, those. Do those, do those four, we always have eight or ten. I understand, I kind of like the transition to new peer cities because we are in a kind of unique growth situation. And our location on the interstate between major cities, I think, all of us have to be thinking about who are our peer cities now.
Yeah, obviously it would be, sorry, sorry.
But I think that we've neglected at least to show, and maybe that's not part of this presentation, obviously, but which, which, which of our peer cities have chosen not to use impact fees at all?
Yeah, and, and there's, there's quite a few. Obviously, impact fees have been around for a while. There's a lot of areas now considering impact fees. You never, you never heard the I word out in West Texas, but now you got Midlands that's adopted them. Odessa is currently in process of, of, of that study. I understand Amarillo is interested in looking at it. Corpus Christi is starting their program. Houston League City was the first city to have impact fees adopted for roads. They've had water wastewater, but not roads. Galveston has a study, so a lot, a lot more cities are, are looking at this tool. But yes, if there, if there are some peer cities that are not listed, then we kind of need to look at their development process and what that fee would be. Each one is going to be different, okay? So we're trying to keep apples to apples here with those that have impact fee programs.
One thing I would say in terms of the why you're seeing more and more cities move this direction is, is the reason we are, which is that we're existing in a property tax cap environment now. And cities have to be as thoughtful as they can about generating revenue outside of that cap that can fund infrastructure investments. So I think that's not a trend that's going to go away in terms of the movement towards alternative revenue generation.
There, there are other communities, you know, impact fees are looking strictly at capital costs. Some communities have adopted user fees or street maintenance fees. And as for the O and M side, College Station, they were pretty unique. They did user fees and impact fees adopted all in one night. So that was, that was kind of a big one, about a little over a year, year and a half ago. Okay, so we, we talked about, we focused on the residential, but we, we kind of alluded to our residential collection rate versus non. On the next slide, we have another benchmarking scenario. This would be the impact fee for a hotel, a hundred and twenty five room hotel, similar to the Indigo, something like that. I, I think Indigo had a hundred and twenty three rooms, you have some small restaurant and maybe some small meeting space. But something similar to that, a hundred and twenty five room hotel. The actual impact fee under that service area two scenario in Waco would be a little over two hundred thousand dollars. In Round Rock, that fee would be just under two hundred thousand. In Fort Worth, that fee would be about, say, one, one sixty, one sixty five. Denton would be about a hundred and fifty thousand. Arlington would be about a hundred and forty thousand. College Station down to about, say, sixty thousand. Kind of a big difference there, all right? We ran another scenario for a grocery store. Fifty thousand square feet of grocery store, whether that's a tom thum or whatever. Round Rock, that fifty thousand square foot grocery store is about five hundred thousand dollars. In Fort Worth, it's about four hundred thousand. In Denton, it's a little over three hundred thousand. In our scenario, a little about a hundred and, say, twenty five thousand. Arlington, eighty, ninety thousand. College Station, sixty thousand. You can see how that, how that differs drastically. Another scenario, light, light industrial. This is two hundred thousand square foot of industrial, light industrial slash distribution type activity. That same scenario, what we call service area two scenario, that'd be a little over four hundred thousand dollars in impact fees. Be very similar in Round Rock and in Denton, then you have a, a drop off there in Fort Worth of about three hundred thousand, a little over three hundred thousand. And then a hundred and, say, twenty five thousand Arlington, seventy five thousand in College Station. We did one final scenario, and that was heavy industrial. This is more, you know, more activity, more of the actual heavy materials composition for other activities. And that two hundred thousand square foot facility would be a little over, well, five hundred and twenty five thousand, say, in Waco under that scenario. Fort Worth, three hundred and seventy five, generally similar between Round Rock and Denton at about three hundred and twenty five, three hundred and twenty. Then you have a drop off there down in Arlington, about a hundred and fifty, and then in College Station, about a hundred thousand. So all this, these alternate scenarios were done primarily because of, do you want to consider maybe a different collection rate for residential versus non-residential? We've seen many communities do it. Some incentivize residential development, others incentivize non-residential development. So, and there is a, a variety of things that you can do with that. You can pull out specifically light industrial type activity or commercial activity. So it depends on the direction you might want to take it. So with that, I'll, I'll kind of conclude the, 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 the initial discussion and certainly open to questions you might have. But obviously, when we come back before you later, that we'll have some more information regarding policy. But certainly want to get your feedback on that.
Hey Edmund, real quick, just on those last couple of slides, I know because we're benchmarking to the units, the, the road miles based on service area two and the amount, how does that, you know, you know, I know that when, yeah, one, one like those or any of those, that it's, it's the roads that predominantly make up the discrepancy there. And since the, the road impact fees are only usable in the service area designated, I don't, are those, is that really? I mean, that, that, that chart looks a little overwhelming. I mean, are those really apples to apples comparisons? I just want to make sure we're contemplating, considering where the project goes and how that works. I mean, because it's all kind of part of, a lot of this contingent upon how much capital investment is needed in each of those service areas, right?
That's correct. Well, it's also a function of only those projects. So the costs that were derived for roads are based solely on the projects that were identified in that impact fee CIP map, the road, roadway map. So the, the monies that are collected from redevelopment could only go to fuel those projects. They could not be used on any other type projects within a general CIP, okay? So there's a clear distinction there. But, you know, each community has its own flavor of what they want to charge. And obviously, in the case of Round Rock, they're probably collecting, they probably did the finance analysis to determine what that maximum was, greater than fifty percent. We, we, we opted at the outset of this study to say, we're not going to consider collecting above fifty percent. So we went with the fifty percent credit. But I would think that Round Rock is collecting at a much higher rate. We'll have those numbers for you next time. But that's strictly a function of the calculated cost of what it is. And so while, while Round Rock might look daunting, that would mean that they could credit at a higher rate, right? If developer comes in, puts in road, you're going to credit him back on the, at the rate you're collecting. So if you're collecting at eighty percent of max, that's greater than if you're collecting at, say, forty percent of max, right? You'll credit it, that otherwise the program's upside down. Certainly, it, it appears, it appears kind of daunting, but you know, it's a calculated number. Straight calculated, and that's their adopted rate.
Okay, and I'll, I'll let others talk. I mean, just broadly, I'm supportive of this. Very similar to our, our prior discussion on the, just kind of the implementation. I'm, I'm glad that we have a bit of an aggressive timeline on this. And I mean, the, the whole conceit behind this, the assumptions we're making, I mean, all of these costs are tied to identified capital projects that are being used to support infrastructure in new growth areas. And that if we, and that if we don't have this, that somebody's going to have to bear that cost, whether it's general fund or ratepayers. So one way or another, the taxpayer is going to have to pay it. And so the conceit of this entire exercise, which is the new development that is driving the need for that extra capacity in the infrastructure that we are building, that new development needs to pay their portion of that, makes a lot of sense to me in large. I have, I have some more questions on the numbers in general, but the, the overall scope of the work and why we're doing this, I'm supportive of, it makes a lot of sense.
Maybe more than happy to meet with you to address your other questions that you might have.
Yeah, thanks.
This is Holmes. I'll jump in here and just from thirty thousand footer, I know developers and builders are very important part of the Waco economy and, and a tax base, labor force, and the ripple effect that they provide for the city, builders, suppliers, and construction workers, framers, HVAC, the whole thing. It, it supports a lot of, a lot of economic activity for the city, and I, I don't want to hamper that growth. And I know we're hitting some things today that are kind of making developers a little uncomfortable as we talk about impact fees and stormwater fees here a little bit, changing some things. And but I, I want the, the developers to know that, you know, we're on their side as far as trying to figure out how to come up with the infrastructure. And a little bit of what you said, John, I shouldn't say a little bit, everything you said was, was on point about trying to figure out a way to pay for this infrastructure. But I want to be thoughtful about how we, if we do this, how we, how we go about it. Again, as John said, the basic premise is trying to place the cost of the infrastructure of this impact fee where that impact is, is created. So that, you know, the, the fact that we do have these different zones, you know, there's, there's an element of, of logic there for sure. And we do have infrastructure needs, that, those lists are pretty daunting, what we saw in water and wastewater and the, the map on the roads. And there's probably, over the next, course of the next couple of years, there will be even more. So we got to figure out a way to, in, in some ways, catch up with where we want to be. With our payment program is basically built around the existing infrastructure, let alone these, these new projects that we need to figure out a way to fund. So again, I, I, I think we need to be thoughtful about how we raise these funds. And I don't want to put additional stress on the taxpayers to direct, directly through the rates or property tax. If we can figure out a way to do it, at least nominally through these impact fees, I think it makes some sense. And there's other kind of concerns here on affordable housing. What's this going to do to affordable housing as we, as we put another fee on top of a, of a house? And then just the impact on city development in general. Does it slow down or does it, does it, does it keep up? Because there's logic that kind of falls in on itself. Will builders want to build here in Waco because there is an impact fee? Will buyers want to buy because they know there's an impact fee? Will builders want to build, uh, here in Waco because there is an impact fee? Or buyers want to buy because they know there's an impact fee? And they will have the proper infrastructure there. So there's, there's lines of logic there. And, and there's also a school of thought where. If you're paying this impact fee, shouldn't our goal to be to get these houses and this development online as quickly as possible? So we're getting that two hundred thousand dollar house online so it can pay its five thousand dollar tax bill. Instead of worrying about the, the impact fees on the front end. But, uh, I, uh, very, uh, in tune with, uh, what we're trying to do here. Um, but what I, what I don't want to do, and I think the, the, what I'm hearing from the development world is changing the rules in the middle of the game. For those that already have, uh, platted, uh, developments. And if there is a framework established here, and again, I appreciate the work that Freeze Nichols did on this. I appreciate the work, Clint, that you're, that you've done and will continue to do on this. But I think important parts is just my notes here, having a runway to, to an effective date, I think is a very important part. A lot of this goes back to the, the last page of the Freeze Nichols presentation. But, uh, figuring out what an effective date, grandfathering in, uh, I guess that's not the right term now. I forget what you said.
Exempt approved Platts.
Exempt approved Platts, yes. Giving them and then having a reasonable maturity date out there where they can stay, keep that status. Uh, for as long as, as rea- is, is reasonable. Um, and maybe a, a pilot program at, and again, these numbers, we're seeing them kind of high to me, that seventy-five hundred seems high. But, uh, and it looks like other cities have determined levels that are more, uh, palatable. So I don't know, I'm, I'm thinking, and again, we're not coming up with numbers or voting on anything today, but something in the neighborhood of twenty-five percent of that with a phase in. Over a period of many years. Um, and then pivot points, uh, junctures where you look at, hey, three years out, did this work? And let future councils decide on, on the increasing or decreasing or adjusting. I mean, I'm, uh, I'm almost, uh, more in favor of that than having the automatic, uh, raises in there. Um. The, one of the problems I'm seeing here, maybe this gets into some more specific questions. Uh. Is, as these develop, as developers pay for the, the part of a road or pay their impact fee. Uh, and they truly do need that road next to their development and that water and the, the, the wastewater, the, all of these. Uh, improvements. Once they pay that impact fee, I, I want to make sure that there's some way to, to know that this doesn't go into a big pot somewhere. And ends up in a different part of, uh, different part of the zone. And, um, but again, some of that is offsite expense negotiation, as you said earlier. If you are, if you do have specific ones, you negotiate those in and get, uh, credit, uh, on the, on this impact fee concept. Again, I just want to make sure all that parts work out. Um. The, um, another part of what I'm thinking about, again, I'm just kind of going through my notes here. As these impact fees are funded, um, just to test, how much are we collecting? Can we use a portion of that? Obviously needs to go, the majority needs to go to infrastructure needs. But is there some, uh, relief we can provide, like on a wa- if the water part of it is a million dollars? Can we earmark ten percent of that, twenty percent of that, I don't know, to water rate, uh, relief to existing users? I, I, I just want to be thoughtful about how we, and I want to be able to measure this clearly and know how those funds are being used.
Yeah, I want to jump in and say that that, that's not one of the things you could use impact fees for. But by having them, maybe you wouldn't have to increase water rates. Or maybe, uh, after a couple of years, you could reduce them. Sorry, I just wanted to be clear that that was not a, an option.
Precisely, Jessica, and that's what I was thinking, at least you would, uh, you would have, you would know that you'd have a source of funds there relatively recurring.
Yeah.
Um, and the, the last thing, uh, I want, I want to say on, on this, and again, I'm talking residential. Uh, on, on this, because the residential side of it makes sense to me. Um, but I, I want to think a little bit more holistically on development costs and how the city. And this is maybe not part of this particular impact fee discussion, but how city, how are the city Waco and the developers work together to make more. More efficiently work together on these, on costs to build. I know that we're working, uh, with the engineering company or with the, our engineering department on, you know, and feedback I'm getting curb cuts, storm drains. Gutter ground, inlet boxes and, and a series of, a host of, uh, of, of cost cutting. I think that the builder and developer can, can effect without sacrificing quality. But, but for the city of Waco specs are requiring them to put in an extra twenty-five hundred and three thousand a lot. And I really want, I, I want all of us to think together, uh, and work together on, uh, on a challenged staff to come up with ways to. Uh, to, to meet that savings part for the developer and still have a modest, or perhaps a modest, that all looks right. Uh, modest impact fee, uh, that we can, uh, count on for, uh, infrastructure. So, uh, uh, and again, this is not part of this direct discussion, but from all the feedback I'm getting, there are ways to make this. Phased in, uh, grandfathering, uh, parts of it in at a, at a lower amount. With, with step-ins in future years. Uh, I think, I think there are ways to make this work. Um, and then this last, the last thing on, I have, and I'll, and I'll yield the floor. Um, I, I'm, I can't get comfortable on the commercial side of this at all. I know on, on the residential, we've got, there's, we're kind of in a, I don't know if you call it healthy, but there's a lot of demand out there. Inventory is low. There's a need for housing, affordable housing, all kinds of housing in Waco right now. The prices continue to go up. I don't think we're exactly in that same spot from a commercial or non-residential, uh, perspective. Again, I know that we need the infrastructure in place to serve, to, to bring those services to the. Uh, to those, the commercial one, uh, projects as well. But man, when I see that half a million, I, uh, on the Round Rock deal. And I know that, that won't be ours, but, uh, and we'll, we would modify this obviously before affecting something. But, uh, I, I, let's get creative on how we put the commercial thing together without creating this kind of burden on. On the potential Waco investors. That, that's all I have for now.
Yeah. Uh, you know.
Go ahead.
No, that, that's okay. Go ahead.
Well, the concern I have about that, that comment Jim, and I agree, those numbers are, they seem too big. But you still have to remember that those, those costs are going to be borne by taxpayers. And if they're not going to be borne by the user, they're going to be borne by other taxpayers. So what's the logic in that? I just, I struggle with, uh, the equity component of that and not, not just the equity component, just to. Just across the board of that. So, um, I, I think, yeah, those numbers looked pretty daunting. And I think we need to consider all of the, um. Well, just, just, all the policy reasons for having those and, and then what, what, at what level? But I think just to throw, throw them out and say, we, I, I don't see how we can have. Um. Impact fees for commercial and non-residential really is just going to put that burden back on, on our residents. And so, um, I think we've got to really think through that before we just throw that out, uh, completely.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't disagree with the mayor. I, I, I agree that we need to come up with a calculation. But again, looking at that road, as John said a little bit ago, these yellow bars. It's just, because that's road, roadways, right? It just seems like the majority of most of these. And I guess, and, and, and a lot of projects, we have to, Mayor, that we, that the developer comes in and does, you know, this is embedded in what they. They do pay for part of the road. They do pay for part of the, the infrastructure drag. So, uh, uh, I agree that we don't need to throw the baby out with the bathwater here. But, um, come up with some good science on it. It's not a half a million per project.
Fair enough.
Um, I was, I was biding time, um, and Mayor, you, you kind of spoke to one of the things that I wanted to address. Um, also Councilmember Kennard. We are in a beautiful situation of, you know, being attractive to more and more people and developers. And, and all kind of, of people are wanting to build in our city and in our ETJ. And it's going to cost money, period. And they're coming to develop to make money. So I get all that. Um, but for, you know, as Councilmember Kennard mentioned, you know, we are now. Burdened with, um, you know, state level caps, we're going to have to make this up in some way. And I, I understand your concern, Councilmember Holmes, but we are for the, by and large, a very pro-business, pro-development council. And city. And so we're going to continue to do things that make sense. But, you know, we can't do that at the consequence of our ta- of our citizens, number one, or us. I mean, because if somebody's got to pay for it some kind of way and it's got to come from somewhere. So I think somewhere between the information that has been presented in this, uh, presentation, thank you so much, Freeze Nichols staff. Um, and, and, and the things that we've been talking about and building about for several years now, we ought to be able to get to a consensus. Um. The fees are, I believe, necessary. And I think that we, um, with the data that they will bring back more specific for Waco, I think we'll find a way. But I, it can't be at the cost of our taxpayers.
So, uh, if I could, one, one key point is this, the fees will be, uh, assessed to new development. These are, this is future growth coming to the community. There's no impact to the existing, uh, taxpayers. Other than they're picking up at least fifty percent of the cost of the, of the CIPs. Because that cost, to put that infrastructure on the ground, someone pays the other half of that. So, um, I did want to make another important, um, point there of waivers. You know, council will have the ability to waive impact fees, but we would recommend that some criteria be established. I cited in one of our meetings, a community in, in North Texas, they got in a little trouble. Uh, Discount Tire or NTP had a twelve thousand dollar impact fee and right across the street, Discount Tire had four thousand because they waived or they reduced it. As long as there's some criteria that everyone follows, you can play, you know, the rules are the same, you know, then there's that ability to do that. But more importantly, the impact fee legislation does call out, um, uh, the ability to, um, waive impact fees for affordable housing. Anything that qualifies under, uh, forty-two USC, uh, under the standards there for affordable housing. But that doesn't mean that, you know, other specific types of land uses that you all identify as part of the policy process couldn't be identified. Uh, or added to that.
Thank you so much for, uh, the presentation, Jessica and Edmund. I truly appreciate it. Um, staff, thank you so much for putting this together. You know, I have to be, I have to be honest. I, I will, I definitely understand the reasoning behind impact fees and the need for it. Um, and, and, and if I'm not mistaken, I think, uh, Councilmember Holmes does the same. For, uh, this is the day that I'm agreeing with Councilmember Holmes today at this session. Uh, but, but I definitely don't want to pass on those impact fees to our, uh, taxpayers. Uh, but one thing I, I completely understand, especially, I, I understand on the residential side. Um, I think a lot of the, a lot of the questions that I might have might be able to be dealt or handled with on a policy. Uh, platform, which, which I'm definitely okay with. Um, but one thing I, I, I just. You know, I, I understand about the impact fees for commercial or non-residential. What I don't want to happen is, um, discouraging any future development. You know, we, we do get a, uh, a lot of the sales tax for, for some of our developments. And then to come on top of that and say, um, in addition to that, it's going to cost you four to five hundred thousand dollars or whatever that cost might be. Uh, to come into our city and to plant your business and to hire our people. Um, it, it, I, I think, uh, we need to work through that. I'm not saying that we don't need to charge impact fees. I just think we need to work through it and see how we, it better make sense. Uh, yes, I agree with Mayor Potem that we are very pro-economic and, and pro-economic development and, and. Uh, uh, but I want to make sure that we continue that training that, uh, there's still so much more that can happen in the future. And, and, um, I just think that we can come with a happy compromise or happy medium where the impact fees can be done. But yet businesses are still interested, um, and desire to come to our beautiful city. So that's what I would say.
Well, then I'll just, you know, I'll, I'll piggyback on that a little bit. And just, I mean, the, the chart we're looking at right now. I mean, this, it, adopting these, you know, with, with reasonable policy guidelines associated with them. I mean, that's, this is another best practice to do because our peer cities are already, I mean, if they go someplace else, they're going to be paying these anyways. Uh, but they come here and they don't. And we're having in our, and we're having to, you know, sh- shoulder the burden of the infrastructure associated with those in other ways. And some of those other ways are being curtailed by the state legislature and some of those other ways are unfair to, uh, you know, just, just some of our other residents. And, and how those costs are allocated. And, and so, I mean, I just see, again, I, I think we, I, I still have some questions. But I mean, but I see the necessity of doing this and that this does just bring us in line with other cities. That we're already competing for economic development wise, that we're already competing for growth and that are our peers, uh, throughout the state. Um, and that it's, this, this is just something that I, I understand the concerns. I think we can work to address them, uh, both in terms of implementation and policy and, uh, making sure that some of the, uh, more. I don't know, strident fears, uh, are not realized, which I don't think they will be. Um, but it's as we go forward, um, and as we're looking at the, the economic realities of, uh. And how that's going to affect our, our, our tax collections based on the pandemic, um, on our, our growth, on the, uh, constraints that the legislature put on us. Both in terms of enable or regulate our growth and regulate our revenue. Um, we're going to, I mean, and, and Jim, you're a banker, you and I both know, you know, if you can't get it from interest, you're going to get it from fees. And I mean, there are just, there are ways you have to do to provide the services that your customers expect you to provide. And if, if one revenue source is curtailed, you have to go with what others, and this is one that is legislatively prescribed for us to pursue. Um, and I, again, I think we'll, we, we are pro-business. We do, we are very much for, uh, development within our community. We want us to continue to grow. We want to support and nurture and, uh, and just promote that as best as we possibly can. Um, and I think that this actually to provide that infrastructure that is necessary to continue to. And, enable the type of growth that we want to see in our community, this, this is actually a necessary step for us to be able to continue to facilitate that.
Yeah, I, I agree, Councilmember Kennard. I, I think the impact fees, once again, I think they're uniform. What I, I, and I don't even have an issue with them, but I do have an issue is when our impact fees are higher than Dallas or Austin or cities that are much larger than us. That's where I think the policy changes needs to happen because, uh, it, it, it would be cheaper for them to go to a bigger, bigger city. And we already have enough things working against us to try to bring companies here. And so I think that's where I'm, I'm looking at it. It's just, uh, cities that are much bigger than us, but it's less expensive. Uh, to go there.
Sure. Well, and, and that does actually lead me to a, a question. So again, and all of this is based on, as it shows on the top there, service area two. So for instance, and this, just this chart, I think is helpful, this two hundred thousand square foot heavy industrial. This was to go and say service area one, the allowable reimbursement for the projects identified for roads. And service area one on the slide a few back is only like a hundred thousand dollars. So could there only, I mean, we can't get reimbursed beyond what we've already estimated. Do, do they stop once we hit that reimbursable costs or do we continue to collect? If, once we adopt them, do we continue to collect for all development or do they stop once we've gotten reimbursed for the amount allocated based on our plan for the projects?
Yeah, the, the theory, the theory would go that it would, once it's paid for, the projects are paid for, you, you remove those projects. Uh, but, but the law says, you know, as long as there's excess capacity in those projects, they can retain, remain in the program. Fortunately, you know, you're, you're reviewing this at least every five years. So as growth continues to occur, say, at service area one, like you're pointing out, and maybe large infills coming into the point where, well, maybe we need to think about. Putting more projects in there, kicking up the rate from six dollars to whatever that number might calculate to be. You have that opportunity to do that by adding other, uh, infrastructure in there. That's part of the impact fee program.
Okay.
Uh, just so I'm not the only person who doesn't jump in with a thought here. I am so grateful for all this, this data you guys have provided. I think it's incredibly helpful. And I think that this is, uh, you know, as, as we're expecting more specific data to come, I think this is a phenomenal time for us as a council. And as, uh, city staff to identify our goals, uh, and, and you, and shape this to fit our goals. Because it seems like this is fairly malleable to the extent that we want to use, enforce and sort of set it. Um, based on what we want to incentivize, what we want to, uh, see happen for our city. Obviously, uh, for instance, we want to incentivize, uh, development in the core of the city. Uh, so we can look at that through the lens of how we impose impact fees there. Uh, we want to have growth and jobs here. And so we can set parameters around, uh, you know, large scale developments. Uh, you know, hundred million dollar investments that are bringing in a ton of jobs. Um, that allow for it to be either more lenient or, you know, we, we work with them to have it be at the top of where it can be. And we use that to greater fund, um, things that, you know, our, our income from our wastewater and water services would be. That we can then sort of. our wastewater and water services would be, that we can then sort of tweak that rate. So, I think this is just a phenomenal time for us to, to use this as a way to really hone in on what our goals are. Because this is sort of, you know, putting our hand to the fire on that. Because I think everyone agrees that these are good and necessary to, to maintain our, our steps forward on capital improvement projects, but it really forces us to identify what's important and how we use and impose these.
Any other questions for now?
Okay. Thank you to Freezing Nichols, Edmund, and Jessica for, for your
Thank you. You bet.
And for the work that you've been doing on this. I'm glad to keep this moving uh down the path. And um, I guess we've got, rightly, we've got between twenty-five and thirty minutes left before we need to get into executive session. How do you want to proceed at this point?
I want to proceed with the stormwater utility discussion, and we'll transition the financial report into a written report for the council. And um, that way we can get through our next item.
Right. Thank you.
All right. I think we're potentially getting folks rounded up here, Mayor, um, but I'll go ahead and call our next item. It's uh Work Session twenty twenty-five thirty-eight, uh, in which we'll receive a uh, a consultant report on a proposed stormwater utility and discussion of the creation of a stormwater utility in the city of Waco, including possible monthly rates and fees. We have uh about to join us at the table Amy Balarly Highland, our Assistant Director of Public Works and Engineering, as well as Jed Walker of Walker Partners, who's been um coordinating this study for us over the past year or two. With that, Jed and Amy, I'll turn uh the discussion over to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, um, City Manager, Mayor, and Council. Uh, we're pleased to prevent, present to you today where we're at with our development of the stormwater utility fee. And I will turn the presentation over to Jed Walker to uh begin.
Great. Thank you, Amy. Uh, I guess I'll just tell you when it, till somebody went over to there you go. Oh, right here? Okay.
I don't mind doing
There we go. No, it, it's all good. It's all great. Okay, so we're going to talk about stormwater funding, and why a stormwater utility. Historically, the Stormwater Service has really been reactive, and it's been provided through the general fund as is, as needed. There's no dedicated revenue source for it. Uh, there are some things that do have to be done annually. Uh, one is to satisfy and address all the activities associated with your MS four. And MS four is your municipal separate storm sewer system, and you're permitted through the state for that, so there are duties and responsibilities required with that. There's necessary repairs that are made, that are made uh from structural failures, et cetera, and then there's just general operation and maintenance of the entire system. Uh, unlike stormwater, water, wastewater, and solid waste are utilities that have a revenue source for operation and maintenance, as well as for capital improvements. We are about ninety-nine percent complete with your all stormwater master plan, and in that master plan, we've studied the flooding conditions of the major water courses within the city of Waco, and we've developed a capital improvement list uh for flood mi- mitigation along those major water courses. And in addition to that, there have been many, many discussions with city staff over the last twelve to eighteen months. Uh, and throughout all the discussions, it has been determined that the routine and periodic maintenance is needed, and those needs exceed the amount of funding available. In addition to that, there's federal and state mandates, uh, like mentioned earlier, your MS four permit. Uh, we believe that most likely when that permit is up for renewal this year, that there is going to be increases on the demands that the city of Waco is going to have to do with regards to stormwater management. As mentioned, the maintenance and the capital demands today are greater than what the general, uh, general fund can supply. Oops. Okay, what is a stormwater utility fee? We stole the definition from the city of Fort Worth, but it resonates well, and it's very simple. A stormwater utility fee is simply a monthly user fee that creates a revenue source for maintaining and improving the storm drain system and other stormwater program activities. In short, it is creating your storm drain system. It is making it a utility. With a stormwater utility fee, it is, it is an equitable user fee, in that the users only pay a proportional cost based on the burden they place on the system. An example of this is that they would only be charged based on the amount of impervious cover on the tract of land, and impervious cover is rooftops, driveways, sidewalks, parking lots, concrete, et cetera. It's cover that can't be penetrated or permeable uh into the surface of the earth. And the funding by way of property tax is less equitable, and the reason for that is that it's not based on the value of the property. Instead, it's based on how much burden that, that impervious cover on the property puts on the storm drain system. And from this standpoint, it is similar in philosophy and rationale to the water wastewater and solid waste uh utilities, because they, that is a revenue stream that is based on usage, not on property value. Uh, storm utility fees were established by state law in nineteen eighty-nine. Uh, one thing you'll hear from us later in the uh, in this presentation is that higher education and state facilities are exempt as well as undeveloped parcels of land. Stormwater utility fees generally, uh, in most cities that we're aware of are collected on the city utility bills, either with the water or the wastewater uh bills. And uh, the bottom bullet point, this does provide a stable re- revenue source. There are dollars that are managed in a dedicated account, and it can support long-term program implementation. Okay, we in Waco are not the only ones that have run across this and needed to declare our storm drain system a utility. There's quite a few uh other cities in our area that have done this. Forty-seven cities uh near DFW, you can go through and see all the ones near us. Uh, Temple, Colleen, Coppers Cove, Georgetown, Round Rock, Austin, et cetera. All of these cities have identified the same issue, that in order to be able to to maintain, operate, and fund new capital projects, they've had to come up with a revenue source for it. Uh, one of the first tasks that we did uh whenever we, we started looking at a stormwater utility fee, and that was to get an accurate, detailed inventory of Waco's entire storm drain system. This is a very small slide, but this is a summary of many, many spreadsheets. And for this, we've looked at, at the length and diameter and material of every pipeline in the city of Waco. You can see there, there's over three hundred miles of storm drain pipeline. There's over ten thousand storm drain inlets. There's other structures like manholes, headwalls, et cetera. Uh, there is many, many, many miles of channel. There's a little, over fifty-six miles of improved concrete line channel. Uh, and then besides that, there's other components to the system uh that would be like curb and gutter uh in downtown streets, as well as all the other streets throughout the city that convey stormwater runoff. So for this, we went and determined a present value uh replacement cost, just so you could look and see what kind of assets you have today in your storm drain system. And you can see that's about seven hundred and sixty-six million dollars, and that is a big number. That's three quarters of a billion dollars. And all that's to say is that, that we have a great asset, most of which is underground, some of it's on the surface and can be seen. But like any asset, that has to be managed and maintained in order to maintain the credibility and function of the asset. Our next task that we did after the inventory was, we came up with, with a cost of service analysis. And to do this, we, we boiled it down to where there are basically four categories of service that need to be taken care of uh and that you are, you all are currently doing uh with your stormwater management program. It's just funded through the general fund. But the first category, and I don't want to overuse the MS four permit, but you're doing the activities that the state requires you to do uh to manage your, your uh MS four permit. And those are things like illicit discharge uh detection and elimination, wet weather flow monitoring and stormwater sampling, removing floatables, uh reviewing land development plans that come in, uh that are generally part of a site development project or part of a subdivision, construction site inspection, uh pollution prevention, good housekeeping, public outreach and education, et cetera. So, there's a lot of elements that go on in supporting and operating that program. In addition to that, there's just general operation and maintenance. There's the rehabilitation and replacement of the storm drain system. That's not adding new capacity. That's just whenever there's a failure, you go in and you replace whatever component of the system needs to be replaced. And finally, there's capital improvement projects uh that would include the flood protection and mitigation projects that we've identified in the stormwater master plan, as well as capital improvement projects to increase drainage capacity in areas that may be flood-prone. Okay, that was a lot, but in order to come up with the process of this, we worked very closely with city staff to define level of service goals. Uh, you'll see here in a minute that, that we defined three levels, uh, more or less a, a small, medium, and large level, uh, or a low, medium, and high, however you might want to say it. Uh, and then within each of those, we identified key activities uh that would need to be done, and this took many of the uh departments within the city of Waco and what their current personnel is doing, what current staff is doing, what new staff would need to be hired in order to achieve the, the levels of service identified. And then within that, a fairly accurate and detailed estimate, estimate of la- labor hours for each activity. And then on top of that, equipment costs, ma- material costs, et cetera. And then finally, detailed construction cost estimates uh for the rehabilitation work, as well as for the capital improvement projects. You all have seen this before, but it's just a quick at a glance. This is from our stormwater master plan, and this is the capital improvement projects for flood mi- mitigation along the major water courses. The projects in yellow are the ones that we have submitted abridged applications to the Texas Water Development Board for a new program called the Flood Infrastructure Fund. And there are low-interest rate loans available as well as grants. We have not gotten word yet, we have not received word yet, as to whether or not uh you all would be potential applicants for a grant and or loan, but we expect that any day now. That's forthcoming. But I guess the bottom line that I would want everybody to see is that we've got almost a hundred and twenty-four million dollars in projects I di- identified uh in the city of Waco uh on the course of eighteen projects that will need to be done at some point in time for flood mitigation and to prevent people from flooding. Okay, this slide is a cost of service summary, and we're going to go back to this quite a bit, and this is a lot of information. This is maybe eighteen months' worth of a lot of work condensed into one slide. Uh, and so I don't want to run through it too fast, but I also don't want everybody to go to sleep either, but on the left-hand side, on the left-hand side, we have the category of service, and these are the four uh service categories that we uh identified a minute ago, phase one, MS four permit. Uh, and these are the three levels of service, and we identified level of service one, just to implement uh the phase one MS four permit is about one point six million dollars a year, and we have a lot of detail as to how we came up with that. We're not going to go into this right now, but it, it is available for anybody that wants to see it. And on a medium level of service, which we called uh level of service two, it's about one point nine million dollars a year, and for a high level of service, uh, number three there, it's two and a half million dollars a year. In the next category, an operation and maintenance that basically consists of three main components, channel maintenance, uh, the cleaning of storm drains and inlets, and street sweeping. Currently, the channels are maintained about once every five years. The inlets and storm drains, once every fifteen years. Uh, the street sweeping for this is, your current street sweeping program is to uh sweep the central business district once per month. Uh, and then in level of service one, it would also include uh s- street sweeping every, every city street one time per year. Uh, and so that is, that's a pretty intense uh street sweeping, but we feel like that, that is what's going on now, and that's what needs to be done for your MS four program. That all comes out to about two point seven million dollars a year in level of service one. If you jump over to level of service two, the channel uh maintenance would be once every three years, instead of once per five years, as shown in the first category. And the storm drains and inlets, once every ten years. Street sweeping is, is the same for the central business district, which is once per month. Uh, but for all the other streets, it would be two times per year. And the total for this level of operation and maintenance is four point one million dollars. Likewise, going into level of service three, which is a higher le- level of service, it's just amping each of those up, uh, and you can see what the um ratios are there, and this total's nine and a half million dollars a year. Let's go and, and look at the third row, which is rehabilitate and replace failed storm drain systems. Uh, this is for existing infrastructure, and it's not adding capacity, it's just replacing what you already have. But if you recall back that we've said that we have seven hundred and sixty-six million dollars of present value replacement cost. If we went in and replaced one percent annually, that would, that would mean that we have a plan to replace it in one hundred years. That would be nine point six million dollars a year. If we looked at two percent annual replacement, or getting the existing system replaced in fifty years, it's nineteen point two million dollars a year. And then on the last one, it's five percent uh replacement of the system annually. That would be forty-eight million dollars a year. The final row is for new capital improvement projects, and this is to add new capacity or just to mitigate existing flood-prone areas. These are the eighteen projects uh that you all saw on our capital improvement project list from the stormwater master plan that totaled approximately a hundred and twenty-four million dollars. And in levels, levels of service one, two, and three, we looked at a forty-year implementation program, a thirty-year implementation program, and a twenty-year implementation program. And you can see how those vary in cost, and that's just the difference in cost of financing. Assuming a low interest rate for it, but going over a forty-year term is eight million dollars a year. Likewise, the same interest rate, but a thirty-year term is still a greater increase in cost per year. It's up to nine million, and likewise on a twenty-year program. Okay, so after we got our costs determined, the next thing that we needed to do is to actually determine the monthly rates, and we did this for each of the three levels of service that we just identified, levels of service one, two, and three. And in order to come up with what the monthly rate would be, or what the monthly bill would be, it's the annual cost of service divided by the total number of billing units. And we wanted to do this on an equitable user fee basis, uh, based on the property's stormwater runoff burden on the drainage system. That's what we talked about a minute ago, and that that would be based on impervious cover for each property, rooftops, driveways, walkways, parking lots, et cetera. And for, for a residential monthly rate, that's a measure of the impervious cover of an average re- residential lot, and we're going to go into a little more detail of that here in just a minute. On the commercial, industrial, and governmental monthly rates, that would be a measure of impervious cover of each parcel. And in order to come up with something that would be an equivalent ratio when we're talking about uh how much a commercial or industrial governmental uh entity would pay, we took an average residential amount of impervious cover, and we divided that into the impervious cover for each of the commercial, industrial, governmental entities, and we came up with what we're calling an equivalent residential unit. And so an example of that would be here, when you see some of the other portions of this presentation, if there's a twenty-acre commercial site, and it has a tremendous amount of impervious cover on it, say it has nineteen acres of impervious cover, we may say that that would be forty uh equivalent residential units. And so it would be equal, that twenty-acre uh in commercial site would be equal to forty residential units. Okay. In moving forward with our billing unit analysis, And moving forward with our billing unit analysis, this is just a pie chart showing the total number of parcels in Waco. And you can see that 70% of all parcels in Waco are residential. Unimproved is 12%. Commercial is only 9%. And this is only based on the number of parcels. What's interesting, though, is when you look at a pie chart of the impervious cover. Whereas before, there were 74% residential in terms of number of parcels, that only, the residential tracts of land only produce about 36.7% of the impervious cover. And conversely, on the commercial side, even though commercial was only 9% of the number of parcels, it yields 55.5% of the amount of impervious cover. Nonprofit, school districts, and governmental down there in the bottom contribute relatively a small portion of the impervious cover in Waco. Okay. So the blue chart on the right, we call that a hyetta graph. All that is, is that that's all the single-family residents and the amount of impervious cover on each of those residential lots or tracts in Waco. And so we went in, and we've got it divided right now between the lower 25%, the median 50%, and the upper 25%. And then we've looked at that in terms of what is the average impervious cover for each of those tracts of land. On the small residential tracts of land, which varies from between 500 square feet to 1,960 square feet of impervious cover, we've got about an average of 1,500 square feet there. And if you look at what the middle residential lot is, they're between 25% and 75%. The average is from between 1,961 square feet to 4,390 square feet. The average amount of impervious cover on those lots would be 2,856 square feet. And that's what we're calling an equivalent residential unit. And so the small ones that average about 1,500 square feet, mathematically, that works out to be about 53% of what the middle residential amount is. And then conversely, on the larger residential, which in large in Waco would be 4,391 square feet of impervious cover, up to 17,000 square feet, that would be almost two equivalent residential units. And so this is going to be the basis of how we come up with our billing rates. But I think the thing to keep in mind is that one unit, an average City of Waco parcel with 2,856 square feet is what we're basing everything on. If you're a small residential lot, which is up there at the top, then you would pay 53% of what the middle residential lot would be. If you're a large residential lot, you would pay almost two times, or 1.9 times, an equivalent residential unit. I hope that's not too confusing. This is just an example of the residential categories. And tier one, these are the, this would be the small residential tract. That has 1,779 square feet of impervious cover. Tier two is the medium category, and that has 4,309 square feet. And again, keep in mind, this is impervious cover, it's not square footage of living space. So it includes the house, the back patio, the sidewalk, any sidewalk in the front, as well as the driveway. And then tier-
We might want to point out that this came from the McLennan County-
Yeah, this came from McCad, and it's a direct takeoff from the data in McCad. Okay. And then on tier three, on the large residential units, this is 15,859 square feet, and that's in the large tier. And you can see on that lot, there is a substantial amount of impervious cover. Okay. So for the total equivalent residential units, the ERUs that we described, for the commercial side of the house, it's 55,741. And for the residential component, it's 34,913. So you can see that there's still, most of the burden on the storm drain system is coming from the commercial, because that's where most of the impervious cover lies. On this pie chart, one thing to take note of is that the state facilities and higher education are exempt, so they are not included here. All right. So here is really where the rubber meets the road, where we've come up with the calculations for what an actual monthly bill would be. And in doing so, we had to come, and this was after many meetings and a lot of discussion, we came up with what we're calling the minimum level of service. On the minimum level of service, the number that we have for the MS4 permit, you've seen before in the earlier chart, which was in the level of service number one, is 1.6 million. For operation and maintenance is 2.7 million. However, for the rehabilitation and replace the storm drain system, just to give you an idea, we put in $750,000 per year. But over there on level of service one, the actual amount we calculated was 9.6 million a year. So that's substantially less. But in doing this, with a lot of discussion with city management and city staff, we didn't think that we could throw in that amount of money in the rehab and replace the storm drain and have this even close to being something that the city could move forward with. Then also on this minimum level of service, you'll notice on the capital improvement projects, that is with a zero budget for capital improvement projects, and obviously, the debt capacity would be zero. So the total program cost there is a little over $5.1 million. And that's annual cost. So when we get down to our chart down here, we still have the small, medium, and large residential units. Again, the medium is the baseline, which is the average impervious cover for homes throughout all the City of Waco. And the same ERUs apply. We have small is .53 of an average unit, and the large is 1.9. So when we come down to what the cost per month would be, we looked at four different scenarios. One would be with the City of Waco not exempting any entity. Another would be with the City of Waco only exempting ISDs. Another one would be with the City of Waco exempting ISDs and nonprofits. And the fourth one down there would be exempting ISD, nonprofits, and governmental facilities. And so for the sake of conversation today, let's just go with the bottom line, which is exemptions for ISDs, nonprofit, and governmental entities. And going across the bottom row, you can see that for a small home that we have in the small category, this would be $2.48 per month. For the medium residential lot, it would be $4.72 per month. And for the large tract, it would be $8.98 per month. The next level of service that we came up with is, we said, okay, let's take the minimum, which has no capital improvements whatsoever, and let's see what can be done for $1 per ERU or equivalent residential unit. And so when you look at our four categories there, the MS4 permit, the O&amp;M, the rehab and replace storm drain, and the capital improvement projects, for an additional $1 per ERU, we can fund with a debt capacity of about $15.5 million, which that's about $1 million per year for capital projects. And so if we want to see how that affects each homeowner in Waco, if we go down to the bottom row where we're saying ISDs, nonprofit, and government facilities are exempt, well, a small house would be at $3 per month for the stormwater utility fee. The medium lot would be $5.72 per month, and large lot, $10.88 per month. We did the exact same thing with this on the monthly bill, and this is the minimum level of service, but with $2 per ERU. And by adding $2 per ERU, we could have a debt capacity of almost $31 million. And that would be an annual expenditure on capital improvement projects of 2.1. If you can see that, it's 2.175698. So the total stormwater program under this scenario would be about $7.3 million. Again, not to be redundant, but just to get a feel for what this would do to each homeowner's monthly bill. The bottom, for the small lot owner, it'd be $3.53 per month. For the medium, it would be $6.72 per month. And consequently, for the large, $12.78 per month. This is an example for what typical monthly fees might be for industrial and commercial users. We went in, we looked at a big-box retail store, and this is an actual store in Waco. We looked at a convenience store. We looked at a bank with a drive-in. We looked at a fast food entity, as well as a manufacturer, manufacturing plant. This particular manufacturing plant is Owens, Illinois. In looking at this, you can see that on the big-box retail, the equivalent ERUs is 262. So that means it would be equivalent to 262 medium-sized homes with a medium amount or the middle amount of impervious cover. And if you look over there to the left of that, that big-box retail store has almost 3/4 of a million square feet of impervious cover. So that's a pretty significant burden on the City of Waco storm drain system. If we look over to the right, you can see what we, our first charge, where we have no funds set aside for CIP, the monthly charge to that big-box retail store would be $1,235. And if we added the $1 CIP monthly fee, it would be almost $1,500 or $1,497. And likewise, for the $2 CIP, $1,759 per month. So I'm not going to go through all of those. I think you all can see them, and you understand where we're going with it. But one thing that's important that's down there in red is that these rates don't include any credits, and those would be credits in exchange for installing and maintaining storm drainage features that would reduce the contribution to the storm drain system. And some examples of that would be stormwater detention facilities, our green infrastructure elements such as water quality ponds, bio-retention facilities, wetlands, bioswells, et cetera. And this is an opportunity that could actually help Waco in implementing some of the green infrastructure, is that it would actually promote future developers to go in and do green infrastructure, to try to get some type of credit on their stormwater utility fee. Okay. So we did do a monthly bill comparison to sister cities. And you can see all the sister cities love it: Colleen, Temple, College Station, Denton-Wichita Falls, et cetera, across the board. Waco currently is all the way to the bottom right. I hope everybody can see that on your screen, because we in Waco do not have the stormwater utility fee as of today. And Beaumont next to us, it shows that they don't have one either, but actually, Beaumont is part of a county flood district. And so they do have something similar to a stormwater utility fee, but it's in the form of a flood district. So it's not that they aren't paying anything, they just don't have a stormwater utility fee. So with our sister cities that we're comparing to here, all of them have some sort of stormwater utility fee. If you look at where Waco is with a zero CIP, that's kind of in the right-hand side, it's five from the left, at $4.72 per month. You can see how that compares with our sister cities. If you look at this one with the $1 CIP, you can see that this compares relatively favorable. And there's a lot of information on here that if you have the time to take to look at and study it, don't beat your head against the wall, because they are, all the cities are so different. For example, our dark blue is our MS4 permitting. It's at $1.51. Well, you might ask the question, well, why is Waco so much higher than the others? We think that part of it is just how people budget within the city. Like, the City of Waco uses a lot of this budget to review engineering plans for site development permits. Other cities may, that may come from another pot. Our O&amp;M, you can see, is kind of uniform across the board. The replace and rehabilitate existing storm drain, that's not off the chart, but you can see some cities don't even have a bucket for that. And then finally, CIP, you can see how that compares. When you look at Waco with the minimum level of service plus a $2 CIP charge, that's over on the left, it puts us at $6.72 per month for an average fee. And our recommendation this afternoon is going to be to go with the one with the blue arrow for the minimum level of service plus a $1 per month CIP charge. Okay. On our summary and recommendations, we are recommending that the City of Waco exempt the independent school districts, the nonprofits, and the governmental entities. Also, we're recommending, just like we just said, of the $5.72 per month per ERU rate, we feel like this is equitable, and the proportion of the cost is based on the burden on the stormwater system. We think it's consistent with the philosophy behind the water, wastewater, and the solid waste rates. We think it's within the market rate of comparable cities. We believe that this is going to establish the first comprehensive stormwater program in Waco's history. It will provide a dedicated funding source for the federal and state mandates for permitting. It will create an annual CIP of $15 million to address the pressing needs for CIPs without reducing funds for streets and parks and other facilities in the CIP. And then Paul, you might want to talk a little bit about the transfers of operating expenses from the general fund.
Sure. Thanks, Jed. Mayor and council, this is Paul Kane. Just wanted to jump in here at the end. As you know, we, and just to jump back one bullet point, when we talked during budget time, we talked about the challenges of determining what our bond capacity is going to be, and certainly, when you have streets and parks and facilities that are in line for those funds, and you add stormwater to them, it creates a bigger challenge for us. So this would provide that dedicated funding source that would allow us to not have all those projects and departments competing for the same dollars. When we talk about transfers of operating expenses, we do have between $3 and $3.5 million of general fund dollars that are going for our stormwater maintenance program today. And the stormwater utility, if it were approved, we'd be able to shift those costs over to the stormwater utility and free up some dollars on the general fund side. So to summarize, we recognize that with COVID-19 and some of the economic uncertainty, that the timing, much as we discussed with impact fees, is probably a good time to take us, our time getting into this and to have a runway, as we talked about earlier, in getting into this. And so our recommendation from staff level is to create the utility now, which would be in the form of an ordinance that would be drafted and come to council for your approval. And we would set the 572 fee, but make it effective October 1st of '21, which should give us some time to do a little more refinement on the fee structure, and also to examine and evaluate the tax rate implications, particularly as we move into budget for fiscal '21, '22. So that's our recommendation. We'd be glad to take any questions you might have. And let me say, I appreciate the work that Amy and her staff have done, as well as Jed and his team. A lot of work went into this, a lot of hours spent going over lots of data and lots of information. So thankful to them for their work and appreciate everything they've done in getting us to this point.
Mayor?
Thanks, Paul. Yeah.
Go ahead, John. Let's try to keep this as brief as we can. I don't want to cut anybody off, but we've got a lot to cover in executive session.
Yeah, this is, I mean, this is, I understand. And so real quick, just one clarification on this slide. It says creates annual CIP of 15 million. I mean, generating about 1 million a year towards debt service, it's only going to, that's not an annual, we can't be doing 15, borrowing 15 million a year to do those projects. I mean, that's a one-time kind of 15 million push for the capital side, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure on that. And then so broadly, again, I mean, just like what we've been discussing on a lot of things today, about 50 other cities have already done this. Implementing something like this is just best practice, and it's, I think it's time for us to do so. time for us to do so. Uh, I, I, I think it, it is a good start, I think that it is very telling that at the beginning, you know, Jed, you identified, and I'm going back and looking at, um, you know, we have eighteen projects that have been identified, about a hundred and twenty-four million. Um, one percent, and, and we're looking at maybe borrowing fifteen to address, you know, a sliver of those. Um, re- rehabbing and replacing one percent of our system annually, you estimated about ten million, we're looking at putting seven hundred and fifty thousand into that. Um, I think that this is, I think this is good, again, like the other things we've talked about, I think it's good, I think it's necessary. I just, I have additional concerns as to how, where the rest of the investment for our infrastructure comes from down the road. Um, just because, I mean, it's, the, the system won't be getting any newer, and just, it, this is a good start, but I just, I want to be cognizant of the fact that it, it, it helps, but it by no means fully addresses the issues that we have when it comes to our, our stormwater management.
Uh, this is Holmes, just brief comment, I like how you tied off, uh, Paul, the comment about the three to three and a half million that we're already kind of spending, not, not in operations and maintenance primarily, and that is an effective savings is uh of the six point two that we plan to raise through this stormwater deal. I just don't want to lose sight of what we're saving on the general fund side, and, you know, to the extent we can, we should pass it on to the taxpayer. That's all I have.
What else? All right. Amy and Jed, thank you all very much. Paul, I appreciate all your work on this. Uh, are there, uh, are there any requests for future agenda items?
I'm not sure if this falls specifically into future agenda items, I think we can find a way to, to fit it in there, but um specifically in regards to uh, one, um, Hillcrest and the tearing down of that, I know that Baylor Scott and Light is committed to, to working with us on facilitating the outcome with that, uh, so I just want to make sure that, that we're taking advantage of that and, and putting together a strategy and communication uh specifically for uh that community, that neighborhood, but also uh obviously the city at large, it's such a historic part of our city, and, and uh if, if we have the opportunity to steward any part of that-
Customer reviewing, customer reviewing, we'll take that as a request for a future agenda item.
Perfect, perfect. Um, and then secondly, uh, with um identifying the need for job training in our city to equip our citizens, uh, to go from part-time to full-time employment, uh, greater wage jobs, um, one of the things that comes along with that obviously is uh a need for childcare, and I know that I don't, and I, I can imagine the rest of the council, uh, does not want that to be a hindrance for someone to be able to better uh their station uh in life. Um, and so I, I would love an opportunity for, uh, to challenge city staff to come up with a way um for the city to work, uh, to subsidize a part of that childcare for uh specifically, you know, people that are engaging in uh job training programs that we are providing or one of the nonprofits that we work for providing, um, so that that's not a hindrance to them to be able to, uh, like I said, be able to get job training, get an interview, and uh acquire full-time employment in that way.
Okay. Thank you for both of those uh requests, Darius. Anybody else have any requests? Okay, we will now reach the workstation and convene regular session for executive session as read into the record by the city secretary at uh five thirty-four P M.
Notice is hereby given that the city council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. One, attorney briefing, Texas Open Meetings Act, section five five one point zero seven one, responses received to request for proposal, R and P, number twenty twenty dash zero zero three. Two, attorney briefing, Texas Open Meetings Act, section five five one point zero seven one, and real property, Texas Open Meetings Act, section five five one point zero seven two. City, Waco Independent School District, and McLennan County owned properties in the area bounded by Boski Boulevard, Lake Air Drive, Cobb's Drive, and North New Road. Three, real property, Texas Open Meetings Act, section five five one point zero seven two. And four, economic development, Texas Open Meetings Act, section five five one point zero eight seven. We are now in executive session at five thirty-five P M.